It is five o'clock, so open, uh, we do have four, just barely, uh, open the April 12th meeting of the Town of Rutland, and, um, and, oh, I don't know. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast on...
Yeah. Blah, 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 blah.
Cable TV and so forth. Did you get an email from Kevin?
Yes, he indicated he would try to be here as early as possible that we were referring to.
Yeah. And I think he was seeing if we could maybe delay the minutes approval.
Sure, I mean, there's other business that the board can do in the meantime. The minutes aren't fixed, they have to be there at a certain time, these A and Rs is...
I think he was talking about these minutes. He had some comments to make on it, so the whole lot.
So don't worry. So, what?
Is there any objection to going to item two immediately?
No, for goodness sakes, I have no objections on that. Checked with Paul McManus. Found the blue ribbons.
Okay. Item two is an A and R on the Westerly side of Campbell Street. Dave Luscher?
Yeah, I'm here for David, he had surgery, he's not mobile these days.
Okay, okay.
Good to see you, though.
Haven't been here in a long time. Yes. Been laying out in Sturbridge.
Do I have, or is this one that I don't have? So, would you like to present this, Ray?
Thanks, it is.
This here is also showing up.
Oh, okay. Pretty plain forward A and R, really. I was at the other place where I used to go, I haven't been here in a few years. I called David, said, "The door's a lock."
So, um, talking about creating lot five and six?
Yeah.
Each one eight and a half. Definitely more than 200 feet frontage. Anything else about it?
Mr. Warren, it's passed.
Yeah.
Mike Sosis was camping the day before, and David got the two off, so.
Even though it's a real distant relative, I just want to make sure people know that, that Freddie Warren was my stepmother's cousin, so.
I think that's far enough removed.
Far enough removed, okay, good. Just want to let it out, do you?
Everybody in Rowan was related, didn't they?
Of course, that's the way you don't throw rock, you'll hit somebody's relative.
I don't think I was, anyway. But I did teach with him.
Yes, you did.
Actually, you and I were related for a while there.
Yeah.
My stepson was married to your sister. But not anymore, so we're outside.
Okay, any comments on the planning board?
No, I had looked earlier, I didn't, went through everything. What did you say?
When it's laid out like this, you think that, oh, man, it's flat. It isn't. It's too bad it wasn't a contour on the thing, and you could see how it's up in the air, so. That's why I'm willing to take another look and...
It's accessible, though.
Yes, oh, yes, definitely.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse plan for David Luscher on 125A Campbell Street.
I have a second.
Is there any discussion? Any hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Which I believe him has not joined.
He's not going.
Okay.
All right. Bring it around. Let it rip and...
Start digging tomorrow. You can make up.
Oh, let's see. It's my check, but it's for David, okay, kind of goes against. Okay, let's see. Two lots created, taken out of one lot, right?
Yeah.
So, two created, one changed, 300 plus 150, 450. So they charged for them one change, you know, too, okay?
I think we already have a check for this.
Oh, what's that?
I think we already have a check for this.
Oh, maybe David did, because he didn't tell me to take, but I just figured, I better take a check with me.
And the check number was?
I think like that, I believe we have a check, so I'll see on this.
David didn't tell me I had to pay, but I know usually they like to have money, and I took a check out, so.
If there's an issue with the check, we'll follow up.
Yeah, I'll bring it up, well, he'll bring it up, but I don't think he's going to be around much for another week or so, so.
Just moved that mic for now.
Go back to the minutes. Up to you. You have the upper copy to A, minute, there.
Want to take this with you?
Yes, please.
The minutes might take a little while, I just have, might be some discussions that might come out of some changes I wanted to make on the minutes, so I just don't know if that's going to delay all the other stuff, we talked about that a minute before. Don't know if you want to put that time out there now, but might get into some conversations and some discussion for a little while.
Let it take some time.
Thank you, nice to see you all.
All right, take care, good to see you.
And it's our hypothetical last two agenda items assembled, also coinciding with those two, so we get to that point.
Well, that's what it is, well. Let's do the second A and R.
Let's do what?
The second A and R. We've got five minutes before our first public hearing is scheduled, so. Yeah, this is, uh... We have A and R on Walnut Street and Kenwood Drive.
And what we've done, Julian Patrulha from Newland Environmental Design, what we've done is there was a, uh, 15-acre parcel up off of Kenwood Court and Kenwood Drive, and we split District Four corner lot off down on Walnut Street, it was pumped and drilled right onto Walnut Street. So, we have a two-acre lot recreated, called Lot 9A, and the remaining land of 13.34 acres on a lot that was approved previously. And the driveway for the 13-acre lot is on Easement A, which went through the driveway, common driveway process with the previous owners. So the driveway's going to continue to go where it was, because this land gets split down here, there's a, there's a brook down by the stone wall, so that's why they did the driveway originally up there.
So you're only creating one new lot, right?
One new lot.
This doesn't take away the frontage from that one?
No, that's right here.
That was still the...
That's the frontage for this one. Says it's got frontage here and it's got some, and it's got frontage here, so it's got 200...
250 altogether, frontage on that one.
And you're both laggard in minimum.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
Nope. Jim last night about it, and the road is coming off of Walnut Street. So that makes me happy.
What do you mean, the road, the driveway?
Driveway, drive over here. Right. Spilling a road?
It's a whole lane highway.
So you're just creating another lot out of the, you know, what, two months ago, not two months ago? Is that locust right now, though?
It's at a different angle.
Did it chat around?
It's at Walnut.
That was, that was the shape of the original piece.
Right.
And that's, we just cut that off right there.
So the locust wouldn't show that now?
No, because it's, it's the piece that we started with, usually what the locust shows.
I got you.
We could have put a line in there, but...
You know what I'm saying?
I'll make sure next night.
Yeah, it took me a while to turn that around. Uh, we have a motion to endorse it, hold a second.
Any further discussion? There you go, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are at 3:51, so that was the first of our public hearing.
Oh, is this the one where the excavator slid down the bank and then onto East County Road? No. Not yet.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Take care. I realize we are moving right along here, but I'm just kind of thinking, I'm not seeing anybody here for these citizens petitions.
There in the other room? There's about 50 of them in the other room, watching us on, on screen.
Okay, let's, let's just continue on with the, with the agenda. So, this is now, uh, the hearing for a two-acre common driveway across from 231 Glenwood Road. And that's you, right?
That's me.
Okay.
I have the covenant of my attorney today.
So would you like to explain a little bit, do we have the plan up on the screen? So I guess my question is, where, where is the proposed driveway plan?
Uh, right, right there.
I have, I...
Oh, he's straightening it out.
I've got the, the plan of the driveway here.
It's right next to the crossroad of 68, down 200 something feet, was it, 200 feet exactly? The dotted line in the middle lot?
Here's the actual driveway plan. So due to the hill with one driveway, one cut on the 68, so it's going to come in across here and up here and go onto here.
And I think it was 30 feet elevation rise, something like that, and that's a...
Isn't the same stretch of those other houses that were put up 20 years ago?
Yeah, yeah. It's not going to be as steep. Yeah, it won't be as, some of those went, huh.
Well, yeah, some of that, but it's the same, is that same?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This won't be as steep the way it's coming across, so, yeah, it won't be sliding out on the 68.
The only question I had, hopefully DPW will tell you to have some kind of a landing there.
Yeah, I spoke to them already.
Okay.
They're already on board.
And Julian is, I think he missed, he missed an S. He's not here. Well, it wasn't Julian on this one, it wasn't Mark Albag. Patricia?
Oh, man, I'm looking at it, maybe I see that.
Antoro, it's not Santoro, Anto.
Oh, oh. Oh, that must have been on the, on the original. Because this, this isn't Julian's, that one, that's the plan for when I bought.
Yeah, yeah.
Got me saying Julian now. All right.
So that's the agreement between the two parties for the road?
Yes.
And, uh, let's see. It's too bad the cop path was still up the bank in.
I tried buying one, one more lot, because Mark said, "So you can get that lot, because that's, you've got that nice cop road," yeah.
Yeah.
But they didn't want to lose the privacy.
Let's put it this way, it was prior to me having a license, and I got stopped by the state police as I...
On that, correct.
I had the truck, my father was in front of me with a chopper.
Yeah.
Where it went up that road into the field up in the back.
Okay.
It used to be Roger Sloan's, but way back when it was, made it a cornfield. Oh, yeah, and matter of fact, we picked up a cat. The woman wanted us to take the cat that lived in that house in the corner there at the time. It wasn't Hank Harris. Oh, anyways, yeah, I'll shut up.
I don't know, anybody want to read over the covenant?
That sounds good to you.
It's, it's the standard covenant.
The biggest thing is, if holds the town harmless of any liability regarding its owners. At least immediately.
Do you have anything, Kevin?
I don't have any questions, no, I just looked at the other, you know, behind here, it was all attached to that other one, right? This is one big lot left over there. So if this was ever to be subdivided, they'd have to come in off of the front?
Well...
Glenwood, probably.
Glenwood Road is sitting right here anyways.
Oh, okay, so they could, all right.
Yeah.
That would never be subdivided again?
No.
For another driveway, is all I'm saying. Hook up on the back, yeah?
It's not, it was once all one piece, split a long time ago. Move to endorse.
Do, do, no, endorse.
It's a site plan, so first the hearing would have to be closed, then after the hearing is closed...
Have anyone in the public out there?
Not that I see.
Nobody. Keep kind of forgetting about that part.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
I don't know, this looks to me fairly straightforward, do you want to grant site plan approval?
I'll make a motion to grant site plan or tool approval.
Aye, second.
Any discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Don't jinx, don't jinx it.
Thank you.
One person left.
We're in for a que, I guess.
Yeah.
That's okay, Julian, you may leave. Kid you're not.
Okay, next on the agenda, although it's not 5:30 yet.
Perhaps you'd like to go to Maple Hill Estates?
I'm a nine.
What is it, what number?
Nine.
We have an engineering report that came in, middle of the afternoon here, sent out electronically. Board has to pay the copy. And this memo is in response to the street acceptance request?
So, it appears it's still a little bit to be done, but they're making progress. They have placed loom along sidewalk. It doesn't say whether it was seeded or not, but... I will sort, takes a little time this time of the year for seed to come up anyway.
Yeah. As long as it stays above 40 degrees, hopefully it'll grow, in Germany. Grow.
I, I guess the, the only thing I'm going to have is, I don't know, at least I don't recall any sand being on that street anywhere.
Really?
Any sand?
Any sand, that had been scrubbed over the winter.
Right.
So, you know, 115 says the street must be swept.
Well, if there's nothing there, then it was.
I was going to say.
Unless, unless when they're putting the dirt down or something like that, they...
Well, I suppose that's possible, that's possible, so.
We'll just leave it there.
Yeah, anyway, this project, project, progress, come on, I can't talk to you.
And Mr. Chair from Maple Hill?
Yep.
The, um, at the last meeting, the board made a conditional recommendation to the select board that the street be accepted, and then from there, do you have a follow-up in terms of what happened? Was, it was accepted, correct? I believe, so I believe the select board accepted the street?
To put on the warrant.
To put on the warrant.
I believe so, yeah.
Then there might be one more round of recommendations made, depending on...
Yes, a final recommendation, um, town meeting.
Town meeting floor.
So if there's any outstanding issues, which get done just before a town meeting?
That's what, that's why the first one was conditional.
Is there a secondary walk? I mean, a lot of this stuff seems to be fairly, you know, not...
I, I don't, I don't, you know, it's kind of one of these things where well, number one, it appears that most of the stuff is, is engineering type stuff.
Right. A little bit of dirt, you got to sweep up.
So, uh...
Waiting for the conservation restriction to be approved on that, too.
Yeah, but, you know, there's certainly no reason that we couldn't individually, if anybody wants to, go, but hey, when we get closer, we'll, we'll see, when we get to find the...
Yeah, we have another meeting.
Final report. If we decide we need to, we will. Maple Hill doesn't seem to be a big, be a big thing, Bryce Lemon might be a little bit bigger, just, uh, a number of things, and, well, uh, I don't know. Anything else on Maple Hill?
No.
We'll move on to Bryce Lemon.
We have information from the consulting engineer, this came in today. It's on the follow-up to the street acceptance request for Phase Two. Who's Uncle Tim?
He is homesick.
Oh, shit, no more colds, though, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Anything from anyone on the first page?
Looks like it, everything's okay.
Yeah. It's just, you know, kind of interesting, you know, the throat on those drains?
Yes.
Because I happened to take a ride up there not long after, and I noticed that the throats were all cemented up.
That was Julian's idea, cementing up the throats, so...
Don't even go there. I don't know where that all came from. Kate Pyburn does not have those.
Anyway, I talked with Joe about it, because I didn't think that was what was agreed on.
It was supposed to be jackhammered out so that the water can flow.
Yeah, but it turns out it wasn't only a couple of them, I think it says something like 20 of them, or really that way. Yeah, so. They kind of decided that would make more of a mess than...
Want me to explain to you what happened? So it was approved with no granite curb inlets. So, well, no, it showed them on the detail page. But we built it with the catch basins so that they don't have, they had the metal flange where the granite curb throat was. And so it wasn't, it wouldn't let the water in. So we cemented the bottom, so when the water comes down and hits the back of the, the, uh, the drop inlet, the curb inlet, it's gonna go into the, if we, we couldn't chisel them out, in other words, because the catch basins weren't made for...
For Cape Cod burn.
They were made for Cape Cod burn.
That's a Cape Cod burn.
You can't, you can't put drop inlets in a Cape Cod burn.
Right.
Anyway.
That's what happened.
Two chipper's.
Okay, so there's still are a few things. Item twenty-five through thirty-three. Well, thirty-two.
It mostly has to do with paving. So I think on the fifteenth, the, the plant's open, so right after that we'll do that. Once we hit the paving, then we can do the, uh, the grass.
Just curious, have you seeded Maple Hill?
Not yet, not yet. Well, we're gonna pick up that, uh, because we had a frost the other night. So I, I just, let's wait until the last minute, we'll see what went wrong.
Number thirty-two. Spike was set in the driveway of number fifty-one Woodside. The board needs to approve the use of a spike and move abound as a field change. That's what we're doing.
Yeah.
That would be at town meeting, fortunately. That's tonight, or at the town meeting?
Is for us to wave?
Requirement for cement well.
Correct.
Which we have done in the past, uh, you know...
And this was under a fence or something?
No, it wasn't a driveway.
A driveway, that's what it was.
So they have like, you've just gotta re-bur.
Railroad, it's a railroad spike.
In the driveway.
Yeah. In the driveway. You can drive over it.
Like a half dollar thing, dollar size.
Actual railroad spike.
I, I, I am just curious. Why would you end up having the bound? Can't you just put them out somewhere else?
No, because it goes at the end of the curve. Wherever the road curve, the tangent line is where the bounds go. So to being an end of curves, and it just happens to be for exactly...
Put a driveway at the end of a curve?
People really despise bounds in their driveway. Plows hit them, snow blowers hit them, it's awful.
So Mr. Chair, is the board interested in taking action on that item? To accept the change in spike layout issue?
I have no problem with it.
Do I have a motion to accept, uh, the railroad spike as a field change?
Go ahead.
A motion to accept the railroad spike as a field change.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Knocked out and resolved.
Yep.
And you saw that one missing bound?
That's the one under the fence? Joe, is that, they allowed, Joe allowed a spike there? An iron pipe. It's, it's, that's, it's in, and it's in.
That's the question.
Oh. Okay. Do we need a grand later on that one?
It's part of our regs now. To make a motion to accept the waiver on the spike being the... What was the iron, you said the iron pipe was put in?
It was put in under the fence, yes, we checked it.
Okay, so, then we don't have to, then we don't have to make a motion. Was it an iron pipe or solid tube?
It's an iron rod, it's a, it's a...
Iron rod, okay.
An iron rod.
Well, see, normally these bounds are applied to cement bounds.
And this is under a, a plastic stockade fence. They put it right alongside of it. So to put a bound there, because we were up to set them, and we set the bound point, I would have to rip that whole section of fence off. And that was last fall. And Joe Buckley, he, he saw it, and there was, there's like five other bounds within a throw, stone throw away. So you can really establish where it is, and the fence is not on the town property, it's right on the backside of it, so... That was the question.
I'll make the motion to waive.
Waive the use of a country bound at, at, at...
Forty-five.
Forty-five Woodside Avenue. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Two resolved.
Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody else have any comment on the court? Okay. So much for Bryce Lemon two, I guess.
Right, so, okay, number eleven.
And, 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 and... Hearing? Let's see, we did the two lot common driveway. Yeah, we're after five thirty, so let's go back to the five thirty public hearing, which is a public hearing on Hilltop Estates, tentative subdivision, two of which I am on a butter, and I would accuse myself, and since our regular vice chair is not here, Dick got asked if he would be acting chair.
I can try.
That's all I, that's all any of us have. Come hang with us, let's lose school, come here. No. Out the door. You could leave, huh? Leave. Stretch my legs.
You ready for a presentation?
What time is it?
Five thirty-seven.
Public hearing is open at five thirty-seven? I have a, I have a motion. No, go ahead.
You gotta open a public hearing, right?
I did.
Right, but your motion.
It's motion, yeah, it's, yeah.
So this is a guy in Hilltop Estates, I don't think it's possible to throw a plan up there. My name's Khalid Blair Jr., as you know, eighty-seven Main Street Road. This property is owned by C.D. Blair Development Corp. It's located on the Nordley Side, Brittonal Drive, right around number forty-five, Brittonal Drive. Consists of approximately sixty-three acres. We're basically looking for approval of a driveway that will service ten of the twelve lots that Hilltop Estates consists of. The other two are located on Brittonal Drive. I think it's lot ten and lot thirteen, I may be wrong, it's right around there. All lots that are to be serviced are, to be serviced are approved A and R lots, with approved special permits. Each was proved to have its own access from Brittonal Drive available. So when we got the special permits, we showed driveways, as you can see there. We showed driveways to each one of the lots that, and the board at the time approved those as the access for those lots. What we're asking for is to approve a private road. Not a, it's not gonna be a public road, it's gonna be a private road. Reason for the private road is that the common driveway bylaw doesn't allow for a waiver. If we tried to do a common driveway there, we would need to, and that, one of the main things of the common driveway is, is that it has to go through one of the lots that it's servicing. We can't, we can't do that, plus it, it would have to be bigger than five hundred feet. It just, a common drives didn't work in this situation, which is what we were gonna try to do, because of the topography here, it's just so steep coming off the road, that each time you put in one of those driveways, you're gonna cause major problems on Brittonal Drive. So we thought we'd come up with a way to put just a road in. So it'd be a private road, all the plowing, sanding, and maintenance would be done by the homeowners through a homeowners association. The road's a thousand feet long to the back of the cul-de-sac. We're looking for many waivers, I don't know if you want me to read, but they're on the front page of the, of the, uh...
Okay, is there a picture of the actual subdivision of the driveway?
Yeah, there is. Yeah, there you go. So we're on the bottom. That's the sec, that's, there's one page before that, they just, they just, I'll read the waivers that we're looking for so you guys... Nope, you gotta go the other way, other way. Front page of this thing's missing. Oh, there it is.
No, one more, frozen driveway.
There's a waivers requested right there, so...
Okay.
I gotta go right up, can you make that bigger?
Yeah.
So... So we're looking for a waiver from the twenty-five foot radius at the street line intersections. Looking for a waiver, request over the maximum of eight percent. When you come in off the street, we need about eleven, maybe eleven and a half percent. Just to get over that hump, and if you go to eight percent, you have about a thirty-foot cut. So you're gonna have a wall on either side that's gonna be about thirty feet long. If I'm not mistaken, you can have sixteen percent for a driveway. So it's well within, and ten percent is, is pretty much where most towns hold you to anyway, so... I mean, I don't think we're asking for a whole lot for eleven and a half percent. Requesting no sidewalks, no curbs, no street lights, no street trees, and cul-de-sac plantings. And we're, uh, no bounds. So it's basically just a driveway, it's eighteen foot wide, my, yeah, basically just a driveway. And, um, it's gonna service those ten lots that you see on there.
Can you just tell me again which ten lots?
Uh, Dave had it up there a minute ago, I'll show you.
Yeah, I'm just trying to...
Go to the...
The first plan to the second plan, trying to fully understand it here.
You might have had a small copy there someplace.
I've got both, but I'm just, you know, they're not the...
That's it, right, so right, right there, that's, that's perfect. The lots are five and ten acre lots. They got a beautiful view. So all the lots gonna be serviced by town water, town sewer, as long as Joe approves the, the sewer extension permit. There are no wetlands affecting that road. There might be some along Brittonal where we put in the sewer and water line, but, um, right there on that road, there's no wetlands affecting it. We design country drainage, so there's no catch basins, there's no piping, it's all swales along the side of the road, which is actually preferable, but you can't really get it done within our regulations if it's really steep. This is kind of flat on the top. But anyways, it consists of country drainage, swales down either side of the road, swales down the back, as you can see, into a big detention pond, that's a pretty, pretty deep pond there. We've got another pond down the bottom, and down the very bottom of the hill, it goes into a pool there, and it goes across the street, there's a, there was a, there's a easement, and it'll go right down into, uh, there's a wetland down there, um, way down.
But it's all treated before?
It's all treated, it's a storm septic, so they, so it treats it. Plans are being reviewed by Quinn, I don't know, does he give that to us with anything?
The consulting engineer had some comments. He wanted to have the board discuss it before going into the review any further.
Okay. Plan's done by New England Environmental Design, it's stamped by Doug Bastin, Bob Mueller?
William Michael Votrula.
Michael Votrula, nice. And who?
Bruce Wilson.
Bruce Wilson. So that's it?
Any questions?
Then I'll take questions.
Did we get, um, anything from Director Buckley? As far as, it's new to me, so town sewer, town water on a private road?
He takes an easement, he told me that, he would take an easement.
Still fully maintained by town, that's not in the...
It, it doesn't have to be, it can be maintained by, by the homeowners, but he, and I don't wanna put words in his mouth, what I understood him to say was that he would take an easement, because he would maintain the, the main line where they tie in. Water and sewer.
Off of the road, and then... Does Roland have any other private roads?
Tons. Tons of private roads, but, yeah, they plow them, but they don't maintain them.
That's what I'm...
And they're not gonna be plowing, they only plow a certain few, from what I gather.
We wouldn't be looking for any plowing here, this wouldn't be, no road acceptance by the town. It'd just be, it's basically a driveway. It's the only way that the planning board can have input, and if we, if they grant the waivers, it's basically granted a waiver for a driveway, pretty much falls within your rules and regs. One thing that Joe did say I will mention, uh, at the preliminary meeting, he wants us to look for another way to get in there, rather than coming in where we're coming in. There is no other way into that place without massive cuts or, or bigger problems. That, that is the only, only place you can come in.
And Joe didn't have a different recommendation as an entrance point?
He, he asked us to look for one, and there isn't one. There is just no place to put it.
The road lies right on the top of the ridge. It's following the ridge line that naturally occurs. And with that detention pond, you can see the, the steepness on the downside of the pond. It, after that, proposed grades, it gets, it goes about that grade, and then it gets even steeper before it goes down. From the top of the page.
Right.
Now, um... This is different than the, the plan that you gave us, the, the plan that I have in, in this thing? Because it's not including any of these, uh, uh, lots that are on...
It's inclusive of all of those. That's how we're servicing with that road.
Right. But, no, I, I just don't see them on, um, that particular diagram.
No, it was on the first one when he, we first opened up with, that was the plan that was approved with the special permits.
Yeah, all the property lines on that plan you're looking at on the screen are actually recorded lots.
Right, I do understand that, and I understand that...
This one here is the one that's approved.
These were approved, yeah. The, the ones that are approved though have their driveways on Brittonal, don't they?
Yes, this is all Brittonal from here, here, and on here.
I know that, too. I'm asking about the ones here.
Those are existing houses.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You had, you had the lots that were approved? And where, that are already approved, and which ones are those?
Yeah, here.
Those are the ones right there on the page.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Any comment from the... Anybody hidden, did it comment?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
What direction is the water flowing in these ponds, towards the street, or towards the back of the property?
Just name and address, if you don't mind, please.
Anthony D'Angelo, Anderson, Colorado.
We got a couple of different things happening. This pond, it's all being caught going down a swale, and coming out this direction. When it fills up, that's the way it leaves and goes through a forested area. This one down here, comes down, let me look at my drawing. Comes down off on this side. And then the hill goes down this way. And then this comes down as a swale, and it goes through a system that catches the water here, and then goes out through a pipe through an easement. There's an easement on Brittonal, that brings it on to... that brings it on to property that Clea still owns on the opposite side of the road. And that's where that discharges. But it's all treated and all of the drainage, this is all done under storm water management and all the attenuation, which means you can't have any different impact. Pre and post is all calculated and the, the engineers are reviewing. It's a, it's a big study to show that all the water's been caught and handled through these ponds, so nothing more is leaving at a rate of doing any damage of any kind. It's all being held back in these ponds. And it has to be treated before it gets to the pond, so these swales have a treatment factor, and there's a lot of paths that are put together and through the storm water management. That's, that's how that...
One thing I'd like to add, those are permanent ponds, but they're also gonna be temporary ponds. One of the things that you guys had a lot of questions on, we were asking for special permits for all these lots, was how we were gonna control the drainage when we built the driveways. This doesn't allow for it to, for the water to run. The swales are gonna be put in. Temporary, we'll call those temporary ponds to begin with, and then all that water gets caught before it runs down the hill as we're building that road. So that, this, this is a really, a much better way of developing that, those houses than it would be if we put in individual driveways.
Yeah, that catchment area, that one detention pond's probably 250, 300 feet long, so it's a big area to catch, shallow and wide to, to keep the water contained. And you can see the swales are pretty much all the way around the project.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, my name is, uh, Tim Gibson. I'm sorry, I have a very bad cold, so I apologize. Uh, my name is Tim Gibson at 94 Glenwood Road. Um, a question I have on that is, um, you know, after the summer rains, I, I would guess that, um, that those ponds would stay full for a good part of the time. What's gonna happen in the summer when it just becomes a mosquito breeding ground for people that live in that area?
Actually, the ponds are designed to drain out. So after a rainstorm, there's a certain amount of time that they can hold water. They're designed so that they allow the water to go out, so they don't turn into actual ponds there. They're a detention. They detain the rainstorm and then let it release it over time so that it doesn't have impact away from the site. So, they should not be actually...
The question too is, those ponds, and almost all ponds have what's called low-flow channels. In the bottom, you put a channel in and it lets the water out. But what hap, the reason those are there is that when you create impervious area, roads, house tops, rooftops, driveways, when you create impervious area, storm water management says, obviously, the water's gonna run off the site a whole lot faster than it is through all the forest that was there. Storm water management says you have to detain it, and you can't, and it has to leave the site in the same places that it was leaving before, and it can't leave at any higher a velocity. That's why those ponds have to be there. They, but they're designed to only hold the water during the storm. It goes, it goes off the, the high-flow channel, and then there's a low-flow channel that drains it, it drains it right out as they, uh...
So for the next, for the most part, by the next day, it should be pretty much empty.
It should be done, pretty much empty, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, just, sorry, Erica, Erica 55, Brittonell Drive. Um, excuse me. Could you tell me, are they going in between this driveway, the private road that you wanna put in, is that going in between 55 and...
It's right next to George's house. Right next to it. That's, that house on the bottom there is this.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a hard day today. I just wanted to confirm. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, um... Marilyn or Kevin, you got any, did you see what was written by our engineer?
Uh, yes, I did. I wondered.
And I feel that...
I don't know if Director Buckley had a, if he had written anything else on it.
No, I have not seen anything from him.
Sounds like you might have a couple of questions. I don't, I don't wanna speak for him, but...
Did you have questions?
I don't have any questions. I think like everybody else is, you know, a lot of water, it's a lot of steep, you know, but I mean, with these ponds that are in there, it's... What were the comments you had mentioned, Dick about...
That's the little one. Carl.
Has Clea seen that?
Pardon?
Did Clea see it?
I don't see it.
No?
No, neither.
If I could request though, Mr. Chair, uh, through the chair, to have Carl here when we have, if, if the hearing is continued. He, he can answer a lot of questions.
Can I call in, Mr. Buckley?
And Joe, yeah, Joe, Joe too. He, he relies on Carl as well. Joe had some comments at the beginning. Uh, Dave had a meeting with, with us and Joe, and I think the fire chief and the police chief and, and I forgot who else was there, but...
Yeah, building department.
Building department. And, uh, you know, Joe, Joe did raise a few comments, and we, and I did answer them. But that was all mostly, he was concerned with access. He wanted to see if there was another way in, and there isn't.
And you said that he would maintain the main line?
The, the sewer and water line. He told me that he wanted an easement so that he could get in and, and maintain those, those two lines. The main line, but not obviously people's property, no.
Do you have, should, give Clea a copy of this letter and... What are our options here?
Our options are, right now, is to continue this hearing.
I think we shouldn't have some more discussion.
And more discussion, and Dave, you have an idea when that should happen?
I'm not following you.
For continuing this hearing.
Uh, the board me said the other week, um, if you want action taken on that with another opinion...
We need to have not only action on this, but also the ability for Carl and Joe to...
Inkley, I think you should see that and understand what...
So perhaps you'd like to go maybe three days out, a couple of meetings?
Mm-hmm, probably in order to...
April, uh, second to May, second meeting in May perhaps? Or the first meeting in May, rather?
Second. What's that date? So, uh, we meet on the 10th and the 24th. So the 24th?
24th of May?
Yes.
Well, what's the, what's the date before that?
10th.
I'll leave it up to the board. I mean, I think we can...
Seems like we might, we would be able to meet at the 10th.
As long as the packet isn't as thick as this one.
Right.
Well, that still gives us a month.
All right, what do you feel?
I'm okay with the 10th. I'll make a motion weeks...
Continue, continue the meeting to, uh, May 10th? May 10th at?
6:45?
6:45.
Can I, before you close it up for one second? He says that there's no right of, this, I'm proposing a right-of-way. This is an approved, I, I'm asking for an approved road, not a common driveway. In essence, it's a driveway, but I'm asking for a road. And what Carl's saying is it's not a right-of-way. That, what I'm proposing right there is a road with waivers. So if you grant the waivers, it's still a way.
Well, it is a way.
But there's an easement, don't forget. All the roads in town now, when they take them, they only take an easement. They don't take the, the road anymore. So when I turn over phase two at Bryce Estates, for example, they just take an easement. Town. They do not take, they do not take the property anymore. So easements are what they are. That's what, I, I believe Bear Hill is an easement, and, uh...
And I do believe that we should send this on to legal to make sure what he's saying is applicable to us.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a better understanding for everybody as to what you're asking for and what the rules and regs are.
We're asking for a, a road to be approved with waivers, with waivers and an easement.
An easement. The road is an easement. We don't create property lines. It's an easement.
Right. But it's, but it's a right-of-way, and it's always an easement.
Right.
Thank you. If you could send that to me.
All right.
Uh, motion made.
Motion is made.
On the second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chair, before we go, so there's another motion I think we're gonna wanna ask for. So the first one is a continuance of this hearing?
Yes.
From 4/12, 22 until May 10th?
May 10th, 6, 6:45.
And just to be on the safe side, there is a constructive grant deadline. Um, I'd like to have, ask for that to be extended until July 30th. That would allow us to write the decision and do all the things in the backend. That's agreeable to you?
Fine.
Thank you.
Do I have motion on that?
I make a motion to extend to 30th, July, July 30th.
Okay.
Fill most of this out.
And this is to extend the hearing to...
It's to extend the, the deadline, and it has to be all completed.
By July 30th, okay. So our, our hearing's still May 10th?
Yes.
Yep.
Deadline is now July 30th.
The board is doing a couple of things versus extend the hearing. And then for your information, so subdivisions need to be acted on within 135 days from the time that the subdivision is recorded at the town clerk, assuming that there's no preliminary plan that precedes the definitive plan. If there's a preliminary plan that precedes a definitive plan, then it's, uh, what, 45 days after the, after the preliminary plan? So there's, there's times for final action.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the second request. I know that you haven't sat on one of these before, so... It's a bit of information for you as a board member.
Thank you.
All right. Motion been made and second. All those in favor?
No, may I need a second?
Uh, I'll second.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Here's Marilyn made a motion. We second, and we'll call it, yeah.
I think you have to sign your own, so...
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, that's it.
I'll send it out to you, maybe a conversation on it.
It was, they, they had other, they had some...
Uh, Mr. Chair, there's one other thing. Maybe this is for you because it's a more generalized discussion, that it has to do with the fee for this matter?
The fee is not 1958 stuff.
And this is not, nothing that would be a refusal amount. This is more a general policy question regarding the fee for this, so...
Yeah. Okay, I guess, by the way, thank you, Nick. At kind of a starting point, we created a subdivision fee worksheet for this Hilltop Estates and sent it to Mr. Blair. I don't recall exact numbers.
We have it up here.
There it is.
It's 34.
Okay, um... Among, among other things, uh, for the sake of clarity, uh, it was calculated based, I believe, on 12 lots, which in this definitive plan is really only 10, in fact. Okay, so those numbers are probably not particularly correct. They're gonna have to be adjusted. Mr. Blair has requested, uh, something less than what would be our normal subdivision fees. And actually what he, and I think you did have a copy of that, he circled on a fee schedule, uh... From the planning board. That, these are, these are your fee schedules. He suggested using this part of our fee schedule. Uh, so subdivision with no ways are created, um, which obviously would drastically reduce the amount of money. I guess I, he's submitting this as a definitive subdivision plan. I have a problem of tinkering with our subdivision fees, so to speak. Uh, the, the other thing that I would note is if you go back to the, the actual calculation, uh, he does have an option of paying in thirds. One-third at application, one-third at, uh, I believe it's approval and then lease and covenant, and, you know. Yeah, one-third of approval and then one-third of lease and covenant.
At the end, yes.
And again, this is only my own personal thoughts. It is a little different subdivision. I could easily see possibly still requiring the first two-thirds of the fee when they are done, so... But deferring on the third payment, once we see what the balance is and the subdivision is well underway. That is, that's strictly a personal feeling, and I'm not asking anybody to agree with it.
I agree that we should. I, I like that, you know, especially at least the first one. Not knowing how situation's gonna be, you know, in the future.
What are you gonna do? The cost of services is not going down.
Oh, it isn't? Wait a minute.
Latest inflation is eight and a half percent of the past year. So, but if you look though, the total fee would be $34,000. Well, it would be less than that, like I said. That's, because that's for 12 lots. 10 lots it would be, I'm not counting a couple of them. So Mike, I have a question for you, and, and by the way, if you guys would, were okay with that, I'd be okay with what you just suggested, just so you know. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, but I just wanna show you something. If you go back to the fee schedule, right? Why, you see where it says, oh, it says review fee, four feet, $4 per linear foot of proposed roadway? Subdivision with no ways are created. It's like an oxymoron. How the hell do you figure that? I'm not creating a way. Anyway, but it, it's measured at the set line, so there's no, there's no, he doesn't have to measure out any lots. He doesn't have to measure out any...
Looked at anything above that.
I looked there, Norm. It doesn't say, that's where it starts.
You're right. That makes absolutely no sense.
It's an oxymoron. It doesn't make any sense at all. That's why I thought that would work.
I thought it was the invisible ink you used.
No, that, I am perfectly honest with you. I don't remember us writing that in there. But if you see that, $1,000, if the plans include retention or detention facilities, which they do...
That's it.
And so it's, so there's the review fee of the 1,000 plus the, plus the, you know, the $4 a foot. It, it's exactly what we're doing. So, but if, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with what you just said. If you wanna, you know, do the, the first two, that, that would, you know, that's, that's fine for me. I, I'll tell you what, I don't, I don't believe Carly would come close to using that up, but it doesn't matter to me. One way, if, if what you suggested is fine too. I realize it wasn't with the public hearing, but I'm, obviously, I know the information on this. And, you know, I can, I can see some legal fees coming in on this as well, possibly. Oh, lovely. Get them involved. Yeah, I, I know. You know, I'm not saying it will, but it's possible. Oh. Whenever lawyers get involved, everything gets screwed up. And I, one of the things I hate, I do, and I know we've done it, and you've always come through, but I hate running out of money in these funds and then having to go and ask. But I always give it to you. I know you do. Whenever you ask, I give you.
Is it you, Norm, or is it Tamika? Isn't Tamika the one that's gonna ask?
So just to clarify, it's gonna be category three, the definitive plan of an operation via preliminary?
Yes.
It's gonna be adjusted to 10 lots instead of 12?
Right.
And that the payment to be signed is two-thirds of that total?
Yeah, according to the fee schedule. That's a, Dave, that's the rest of your agreement, isn't it?
Assuming that that's a, there's consensus.
I'm okay with that. I just wanna verify the 10 lots. There's that one little piece left down in the corner next to, um...
That's, that's the 11.
154 foot of, that's the 11, but it's not...
It's like a triangle?
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot.
That is, that'll be...
It's a front lot, yeah.
It's a lot, okay.
But it's not part of that, those other lots.
And where did that 12 come from?
So there's lot number 13.
I think in the, I don't know if it's the cover page or whatever, there's a 12-lot subdivision.
But there were never really 12 lots created?
There's always been 12. What happens is, um, and they're all A and I lots. So there's lot 13, which is on the southerly side, just before you get to George's house, if you're coming from Palmaguss. And then there's one there, three of these.
Oh, okay, there's those two, yeah. And then there's Daleks.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might have been on the application.
I just didn't see your name. I got, okay. And then what was the, just remind me why this, the lot, I don't know if it's the biggest one, the fifteen acre lot, with all that funky zigzag in there. Why did you do that? I'm just curious.
That's the driveway, right?
Yep.
That's the driveway up there.
Yep.
Oh, so the house is going out. Okay, because it says proposed house down here.
Yeah, but it could also go up there if it's part of it.
I'm just curious. Was that?
You know, gives the people an option. That's the highest point.
Oh, nice little spot. I'm just getting curious. So that, that lot would now.
Pretty much.
Right there.
But that lot would now be serviced potentially by.
The end of that.
Yeah.
Top of the ski area.
Yeah, that's where the old rocky ski area was.
Yeah. I just had those questions.
So I don't know, do we need a motion to accept that change in the fee?
If the board just wants to have indicate consensus on that approach or a vote, a vote is probably the best way to go.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. No, go ahead.
I don't want to make the motion. So this is for this particular, right, we're just making that motion to adjust.
This one.
The fee schedule.
Correct.
For Hilltop Estates.
To require two-thirds of the usual fee with the final third being determined.
To require two-thirds of the original fee with the final third.
To be determined.
To be determined.
I already gave you six thousand, right? Dave, you got that, right?
I'll second.
Karen brought it up last.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I told her to give it to you.
Motion carries.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we are kind of back on track.
All right.
Where?
Here, I have number five, the first of the zoning article.
Yes, known. I'm just a little bit curious. I swear I remember seeing there was an application for twelve lot subdivision.
I couldn't screw that up. I've been able to do that before.
Okay, on to the next. We now have a public hearing on a zoning amendment, citizen's petition to add to Article Three of the zoning bylaws regulation. Section ten A Village Center District uses allowed by right the site plan approval on the planning board to include automobile sales and repair, motorcycle repair and sales. Do we have any one of the petitions here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, it would, can I explain your idea, your thoughts or?
Basically, it's my property, the Center Village District. And two doors down, they have a small engine repair. Three doors on the opposite side, they have Mel's Auto Sales. And on the same side, approximately five properties down, they have an auto repair. I was looking to do auto sales and I was told I needed to come before you to have the zoning changed, amended, which I don't understand where everything's all right there already. All I'm doing is just, you know, trying to do something on my property and it's.
Now, we cannot, we do not change the zoning. That has to be done at town meeting. Okay, we just hold a public hearing to get public input on the zoning changes. That's the legal procedure.
Public input is excellent. Go for it.
Do we have a zoning map?
There's an ask if you could put, if we have anything.
Yeah, Center Village District. I mean, like Center Districts.
They said you can put anything there.
Two, no, the four corners one. And the other one up top over on.
Run on one twenty-two?
Run on one twenty-two.
And right near four corners?
Right. I'm just trying to remember which house is you. I don't know which house.
It's up on, right across the hill. I'm right down on the right. It's the red one.
Heading towards Paxton?
Yes, on the right. I have a clad lot there. I actually had the zoning, the zoning individual, Dave came over to the property to look at it. He's like, this is fine. I talked to the state. State said things are good because you can see both ways, the distance. They said there's no issue here. Now I'm in the process. I have to do this before I can get the sign approved through the state to put on the highway.
Now, there's another little twist here. Because at the same time we created the Village Center Districts, we also did the Town Center Districts.
Yeah.
And I believe auto sales are allowed in the Town Center District.
I believe that's correct.
So, you know, town and village, granted, they're a little bit different, but.
But now, yeah, I was gonna say.
So it's not specifically written in the Village Center, yeah. But yeah, but like you said, there's already, there's already guys selling cars over there.
But it is written in the Town Center Districts. To me, that's a little bit of a disparity.
I can't remember if that fellow was there prior to, we doing the Village Center? The gentleman that's there already selling cars, wasn't he there before?
I don't think so.
I mean, Davy was down there doing auto repair. Is he still doing it?
Yeah.
Is that an active, I mean, he's been doing it for thirty, forty years.
Yeah, he's selling stuff.
In other words, there would be grandfather.
I mean, this goes to the same, was that not part of?
Put a McDonald's there.
I think about how many, we don't have, we got.
Makes no sense.
Is there one place in town that sells cars?
Just that guy, I believe.
So isn't it kind of funny, because, right, so my point is that the only place we have that sells cars is in the Village Center District. But the only place we theoretically approve it is in the Town Center Districts, so then.
It makes no sense. I think they were just trying to rush it. That's what I think.
When was that written? Do you remember?
Two thousand, I think it was.
No, two thousand six.
Yeah.
Was it ten maybe?
And we were the ones who wrote it.
I mean, I could.
Because that car dealership's been there a while. It hasn't been fifty years, but it's been a while.
I could put ten duplexes up there.
Golf carts first, I think, or something.
Didn't they used to sell booze there?
Then you had the video store there.
Yeah.
In that other building.
Yeah, you have the daycare there.
Is it daycare now with doggy daycare or something?
They switch it off and on. Daycare, this or that, morning tree.
Where does the Village Center end? Does it go up to the golf course?
Oh, of course, it ends at my property.
You got the wax one?
End of my property, yeah.
How close are you to Irish Lane? Half a mile.
That's another.
Three, three properties down.
Oh, that's not.
Oh, that's not that far.
No, it's not that far. Probably throw, my son could throw a baseball through it, but.
I don't know. I think it's just a question. It's not a question of what necessarily exists there. It's a question of whether that's an appropriate use for that kind of zone.
Right. And I believe, I believe it's, it's good to have business in the town.
How was that?
It's a great parcel.
Couldn't he just come for a special permit or?
Home occupancy, no.
No, no, that's not the word.
No, because this is more of a, this is a business.
This is a bigger business and all that, but.
Nine to five business or whatever.
Son of a gun, you know.
Nine to eight.
Oh, no, I said nine to, you know, it's gonna be a typical.
No, I don't.
It's like planning, you know, and all that's.
So tonight, we're just discussing the.
I mean, honestly, I'd like to get this thing underway because I want to start selling vehicles.
Well, let's see. If you're gonna have to go through the town on this, maybe next year?
All right, all right, Dick. Don't be telling me that. I'll be selling them over at your house.
It's on a warrant for next month.
Or it already is. So what is the specific decision that we need to make or are we just having conversation?
We're just having the public hearing.
We're having the public hearing and once we close the public hearing, we can, if we so choose, right at that time, make a recommendation. It will be brought to the town meeting.
Mr. Chair, just to break in, because we have a new memory here. So if someone wants to propose a zoning change, even if it's a citizen's petition, or if it's not a citizen's petition or it's sponsored by staff, any zoning change, you used to have a hearing under the zoning act. So this is a requirement of the zoning act. So that's why this is here tonight.
For just open discussion.
Well, what the board, the board is charged was making your recommendation, either in writing at this time after the hearing closes or on the town meeting floor. That's the prerogative of the board. But the relevant part for you as a new member is that a public hearing is required under the zoning act for zoning changes. And that's why it's here before the board tonight.
And then where is the only other question I would have? So your house in conjunction with the, I call it the video, video store. And how many houses are in?
Two.
Two houses in between?
No, the one house in between.
One house in between?
Yeah, it's that strip mall, then Nichols, and then my property.
Okay.
Basically right next door.
For some reason, I know that I can remember that some time ago.
Any more questions, comments from the board? Any questions, comments from the public? I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Is it the pleasure of the board to make a recommendation right now?
I'd make a recommendation that we recommend favorably and support.
And I'll second that.
Another car dealership, Route one twenty-two.
Well, we're voting to change the, not on specific, but on.
I understand.
So it could be twenty car dealerships.
Whoa, awesome. Just what he needs. He starts and everybody comes in.
There you go, there you go.
Fair competition. Isn't that what business is all about?
That's right.
Ford, Chevy and Toyota and everybody else.
Exactly.
In favor?
Aye.
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 Good luck. No, sorry. You're not gonna, you have five years, five years.
What was the recommendation?
We recommended favorably.
Okay.
So now it'll be on the warrant.
It is on the warrant.
It's on the warrant in a month.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Have a good night. Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to go back to the night for a few minutes before the next hearing?
Let's see.
That's the, I'm sorry, ten rather.
Ten?
We did ten, didn't we?
No.
And eleven were both.
Eleven, we did eleven.
Actually, there was a few more things on ten.
Okay, let's go back to price lemon, phase two.
Phase two, yeah. So there was a request that a change in phase three, whether that should be referred to the consulting engineer or not. So we're just looking to get a motion from the board to refer that matter to the consulting engineer. It has to do with the change in phase three for the infiltration pond. Instead of it being below ground, you make it all around. I'm talking about phase three.
Bryce, yeah.
And the thing you'd like to have referred to Quinn. I'm trying to explain it to the board.
Okay.
He wanted it to be referred with any more specific to him before he reviewed it.
Oh, okay.
So I'm trying to describe it to the board here.
So if you want me to just kind of give you a back, a little bit of background, so in the original design, there was a holding, it was retaining water in a series of pipes. The pipes are four feet in diameter and they were two hundred feet long and I think there were seven, seven.
Seven pipes.
Pipes that held the water. So the water held, yeah, that right there. So the water held a certain amount of volume, whatever that was, whatever it is. And the pipes alone cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand, just for the pipes. Not including installing or anything like that. But the big thing here is it's all underground. The maintenance is awful. So, you know, anything that runs into catch basin, runs into these, then you can't get it up. So underground storage is not the way to go. So Julian and his people came up with a above ground, using a wall, a retaining wall, to hold as much volume as those underground pipes. I mean, the wall's a couple hundred feet long. It requires, it's gonna require a building permit. But other than that, it holds the same amount of water, it uses the same wears, the same, you know, all of the other stuff is all the same on both ends. So the point is that there's no one, if you allow this or let Kyle review it, there's no more underground storage, there's no more need to maintain a series of pipes that are underground. And we did, by the way, go over it with Joe. He was in favor of it, of, you know, being looked at. If it met stormwater management, which it does, we submitted all the books and, you know, all the calculations for that. So we're looking to have you guys say, yeah, go ahead and take a look.
I love the last sentence. And our last site we got approved in Holden. They wouldn't allow them.
They wouldn't allow them.
And I agree wholeheartedly. You don't want pipes holding the silt and everything else buried. That's useless.
If this all works and goes through everything, what happens to those pipes?
They're not to put them in. We just have a big pond.
So this isn't existing? This is a.
This has to be made. One of these, that has to be done. It's a series, it's detaining the water so it doesn't flow off the site because of all the burdens. Detains it so that the volume that leaves, that's leaving.
Still, it's considered a detention pond, not a retention pond, right? So going in and out.
Yep.
So I say we're looking for a motion to refer those changes to Quinn Engineering for review.
Yes. So moved.
So seconded.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Since the board has a few more minutes, another thing for Bryce. This is phase two. There was an email from Quinn. He got the location and made. So there was correspondence with Joe Buckley on this. And that Mr. Buckley's preference is that he considers it to be a private grain. And that if he noted on the plan accordingly, not accepted by the town.
That's that way anyway. That's the rules, Bryce.
I think Quinn was just looking to get clarification and totally just, you know.
To make sure it's noted on the plan.
Noted on the plan. So and the idea was whether the board had any questions or concerns with that. I just wanted to recognize that.
And what's the? Seconding, I'll flip this over. Julian, you showed the easement on lot thirty-nine R, but the other page, it looks like the pipe goes on to lot, what, fifteen, forty?
Are we on Bryce Estates?
Isn't that what we're talking about?
The detention pond, that's ninety-nine, not thirty-nine.
There was another issue. There was an ease, there was a drop in like going from one lot to another one.
Yeah, it's on thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, yeah. That's what we're not talking about.
He wants us to show it on the plan?
And listed as a private, a private.
Yeah.
Easy, yeah, the eye gray.
So that would not be accepted by this town.
Look at that, yeah, good. I understand.
But there's, see the easement there?
Yeah.
But it shows the pipe going on the other person's property, not through where the easement is.
Pipe goes right, right down the side of his driveway. So we're that showing. I can tell you it's down the side of his driveway.
All right.
I'll watch the picture.
Anything else on phase two?
No, so the idea would be that this is a private easement and that it should be noted accordingly. Right, then there's nothing else. If the board has one other quick minute, maybe for phase two, phase one?
Yeah.
So if phase one, as the board knows, the stream was accepted, the board gives recommendation. However, after town meeting ended, there were things that needed to happen after that that did not happen. that did not happen. So the, the methodology here is to have the board reconfirm its prior acceptance of the phase one streets for Bryce Estates. And then that can be put onto the warrant after it's reapproved by the select board, then re-accepted, and then immediately thereafter, the things that have to happen will happen, and, and we will not see a delay because there's a certain amount of time for the easements to be drafted and all the other backend things. So this is just a procedural thing to, uh, take care of those things that need to happen after town meeting. So we're just looking for the board to, to reconfirm its prior recommendation to accept the streets for phase one.
So do I have a motion to reconfirm our recommendation from previous town meeting on the acceptance of phase one?
Aye, so move.
And aye, so second.
Any discussion?
And this, and this time it'll make it through quickly.
Well, let's put it this way, it's up to the lawyers to do that part.
Exactly.
So blame the lawyers. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are up to 6:30. So, so let's move back to item six.
Okay, we can't adjourn.
It's not even back up yet. Okay, this is a public hearing on a zoning amendment citizens petition, uh, two. I amend the zoning bylaws by leading section 8B special from age of home occupation and its entirety, and replacing it with a new section 8B. And we have someone from the petitioner here.
Mr. Chair, George Curtsey, members of the board. I said over here so I can see him. So the, I submitted an application to change the Rutland Zone, 212 East County Road. I submitted an application to change the Rutland Zone bylaw as to the major home occupation provisions. This bylaw, this provision has been in place for a long time and there has historically been some issues with this provision. Specifically, this language that requires the major home occupation to be incidental to the residential use, which means clearly part of the residential use. So it has to be tied to the residential use of property. Where a lot of people will be using their properties and if they're not using, what they're using it for is not residential purposes. If you, if you look at what's incidental to residential use, it's using as a residence. So, you know, it would be fine for maybe a tea shop or a restaurant or maybe a bed and breakfast, but it doesn't really lend itself for other kinds of business uses that might want to use it as staging area for home occupation. Listen, I'm a lumberjack. I want to use it for lumberjack. I leave in the office. I leave in the morning, but I'm working out of my house. My, my, you know, truck is here and I want to, you know, leave in the morning and come back. This lets them use their home really for their business. There was, just over the last several years, there are things that I had seen that came up. We recently had an application on, or in front of the board, there was a recent application up off of, um, Dr. Ridge Road, the Glenwood Extension. And the language in that bylaw that as it was written was restrictive of that. And Rutland has dozens, dozens of, um, small businesses that have matured and developed on the property, and this would lend itself to that kind of application. Still, given the board, it's still a special permit requirement, so it's still going to be zoning, you know, special zoning, really, that's going to be required, notices to abuddies, public hearing, any opportunity to put restrictions on it. So that if appropriate, you know, what, if you see something on River Road, on a three acre lawn on River Road, and somebody wants to put it for a fence company, makes sense. If you, if you see somebody that wants to put a fence company in, um, you know, you know, up in Rolling Ridge or, you know, Bryce Estates on one of the small lots, it doesn't make sense. But if somebody in those areas want to put, you know, run their accounting office out of there, that makes sense. We, I, I had, so when this came up, when I was thinking about this, I was saying, you know, what, what kind of provisions will we put there? We'd want to, right now, we have a limit to three employees. Makes sense. But if I've got a 10 acre property, why are we having three employees? Why do we have that kind of language built in to this bylaw, which stunts growth? Um, you know, wouldn't be appropriate. So if a guy has a fence company and he wants to put the fences on River Road, he's got a 20 acre parcel and he has four employees, you can't do it. You can't do it there. But in those circumstances, you know, under this bylaw, the way I have written it, allows for that kind of use. And still, the board has the opportunity to put limits on hours of operation. They require screening. They can still put parking, you know, identify where the parking is. So I just thought that it, it was time to at least propose some, I think, long needed overhaul of a very good provision of the bylaw. I think Rutland did a good job when they adopted it. It's just some language needed tweaking over the last 20 years, and I, I just took pen to paper and threw it in there. Uh, we've got a lot of people that supported it. I think that it's a healthy change for the benefit of the town.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I was...
That's all I have to say. So that's, if you want me to go over details, I may have to go over details on it.
You have a question?
Yep.
Um, in your initial, uh, your, your introduction, whatever, your first statements there, talking about, um, having that, removing the word incidental, and it would be, shall be clearly subordinate to the primary residential nature. Does that mean that there must be some tie-in back and...
No tie-in necessarily between the use, but the, but it's his residence or her residence. So it's there, you know, it's not as though you can buy the res... Let's say for instance, your own piece of property and you're going to rent the, the buyer, the guy who buys the property buys it for rental. He's going to rent the apartment on it, but he wants to put a, a 20 car garage. That's not, that's not incident, that's not subordinate to his residential use. That's a business property that's being used. He's renting the property, he's renting the residence for his, you know, for his income, and he's using the, the property for his business. That's not what the major home occupation was designed for. The major home occupation was for the guy who's living there to use the property for, he's living there, I'm living here. This is my home, but I also leave here to go to work. I park my truck in the yard. My, um, my staff comes with me. So let's, you know, as I said, let's say it's a fence guy. Um, he's got a 10 acre property. He has, his, his trucks and his tools are all there in his garage. The guys show up in the morning, they load up, they identify where they're going and they leave. But he's living there. He can't use that, he can't use the residential property as a business unless it's tied to, unless it's his house.
So nothing concerning the business needs to take place in, you know, in his house?
In the house, no. At least that's what I, that's what I thought. You know, I, I thought, see, that was the problem I saw with incidental, was that, um, the definition, when you look at case law on what incidental means, it's got to be so, so entwined with the residential use. It's got to be part of the residential use. So you look at this and you say, all right, you know, and we, we had this issue down, um, on the Warrington property with the dance studio. Bed and breakfast, people come, they sleep over, they eat. That's resident, that's incidental to residential use.
Right.
Okay, no problem. How are you tying the, the dance studio as incidental to residency? It's, you know, it's not. But, so it's kind of like forcing the issue where we, we close one eye and right now, under the way it's currently written, we close one eye to, you know, to the word incidental and approve these.
So how, how do you define, um, what is the word I'm looking for, uh...
Subordinate?
Subordinate, correct, yes.
It's his, it's his home. So it's not, it's not going to be, if it's a rental property that he's renting it out, it's not really his residence. It's not, you know, so the, the, um, you, you know, if he's living in the house, all right, and that's, he's spending most of his, you know, he's spending his weekends there, and I'm using he, I'm sorry, I should be using he.
Right.
You know, they're living their weekends there, they're raising their kids there. That's their residential use. That's the primary function of that property. That property is serving them as their residence. Um, they have their back, they have their cookouts there. That's where they, that's where they live.
I, I just have trouble tying that into the business. I, the rest of this, I thought was, you know, was, was fine. That was, that's just my issue.
You still want it tied in? So like, the thing is, let's, let's say for instance, let's say he's a woodworker, all right? I'm, I'm a cabinet maker, all right? I, I have a workshop. I'm building cabinets. Or I'm building, um, I'm a boat maker. I'm making canoes. Here made canoes. I'm selling them, you know, the custom canoes, custom, you know, watercraft. Um, how is that tied into his residence?
How would it be subordinate to it as well?
Well, because he's, he, because the truth of the matter is when he clicks the light off in his, in his workshop, he's going home to sleep and eating and do his whole life on that property, independent of the three hours he's building his, his motorcraft.
I don't have a problem so much with the idea as it's just that word subordinate.
It's in the original. So, 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 so...
That was my problem.
So, I mean, I have, the problem, the, the problem, and I don't have any problem taking out subordinate, because I believe that the free use of property, I, I like the free use of property. But as it's currently written, it's incidental and subordinate. I can, I can, I can make an argument, or property owners can make an argument, that my use is subordinate. I'm using this to live. I raise my kids there. My kids go to school and stuff. I live in that house, you know, seven days a week. Um, but I, I work in the shop four hours a day. I work in there. So that's subordinate to my residential use of the property. But to make it incidental is, you can't, how can you say my, my canoes are allied to my residence?
I don't have a problem with you taking incidental out of it.
So to like try to relate to that, it's like owning a multifamily building that is also your residence. Therefore, you can qualify for a 30-year mortgage and you don't have to put down a large amount of percentage down, and you don't have to go for a 20-year commercial note because it's a dual role. So like what you're trying to think, you're trying to say is, is that not only is this where he hangs his hat at night, but it's also where he starts his business every day. Not necessarily a business that is honey farms where people come to you, but it's more of a place where you have the available space. This is where you keep your equipment that you have for work or your woodworking tools or whatever you have, and then you carry on with your day.
So that's a great, so let's say for instance, it was a pizza shop, that the, you know, that you, you've got a small one bedroom, um, you know, one bedroom apartment above a pizza shop. The pizza shop is the primary use of that property, not the, the bedroom that your, you know, your fast, you know, your cook might use or something. So that's, and that's, and by the way, this is what the board's going to determine on a case by case basis, because that's what special permits are. They come in here and they say, I, this is a subordinate use. This is what I'm using. And if you see that somebody wants to open a, a pizza place in Rolling Ridge, you say that's not subordinate to your residential use. You know, that, the residential use has to be the primary use of that property.
So it would also be subordinate to the use in the neighborhood?
So those, those, the use of the neighborhood, those are going to come in under other criteria that the board's going to review to see whether or not the use is appropriate for that neighborhood. So under, um, if we look in the paragraph three, I, I'm just seeing, just seeing where I put this.
Anyway, I...
Yeah, consider it...
Two, three, four, I mean, you guys, so, so I think, so under the existing one, you have paragraph two. I kind of broke that down into, um, three additional paragraphs, two, three, and four, which talk about, um, neighborhood character. So you can impose conditions that would preserve the neighborhood character. Um, you can take into consideration the, you know, hazards and whether there would be a disturbance to abuddies. Um, so let's say somebody has a house and they say, well, you know what? I want to do a rock crushing operation in my yard. Well, you're going to be able to take a look at that. Say, no, 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 I'm, I'm a rock crusher. I'm going to bring in rocks. I'm going to get a rock crusher. I'm going to be, you know, a stone maker or whatever. Maybe you guys are going to say, well, no, no, we're not going, that, that's not appropriate at this site, you know, and it may be appropriate, you know, on the hubbets in line, but I'm not saying, you know, but, you know, it's not going to be appropriate in Rolling Ridge. And that's what you guys are going to determine on a case by case basis as to whether, and that's part of the special permit discretionary function that the board has. There was language in there about fencing that says you can't use certain materials in the original one. I'd leave that to the board on a case by case basis.
Right, yeah.
You know, um, take out those kind of, don't tie your hands. Free it, free it up.
Right.
You know?
May I say something? So, right now, there's an awful lot of businesses in town that don't meet the requirements of a major home occupancy the way, the way it's written. And if a neighbor, new neighbor moves in or if something happens where there, there's some sort of a problem created and they complain to the zoning enforcement officer, you got a guy that might be running his business for the last 30 years out of his house, and immediately he has to shut him down. And he's got 30 days to, to move. So, you know, I, I went and I spoke to Ron San Angelo about this a month or so back. And he said, well, the town's looking for a place that we can let these people park their vehicles and, you know, on town property so that they have a place to put them and, you know, they don't have to leave them in their yard and things like that, which, I mean, he was trying to make the best of a bad situation. Point is that doesn't work. And how do you do that? I mean, I mean, you could have a business on the other side of town and he wants to park stuff over on Route 68 where the town owns some land. These, the, the way the major home occupancy zoning bylaw, if, if that's what it's called, is written, right now, it pretty much doesn't allow for anybody who has a business in town, which Rutland is made up of hundreds of these little businesses and people run them out of there, and they've been doing it for years and years and years. All of a sudden, and when Harry was here, you know, he was giving permits to build garages. He was giving, and he gave a permit to the marshal to build a dance studio, called it a barn. The point is that, you know, if, if, if it, if you push to enforce it, then you're going to shut down half the town with people who are out there. What George has done here, and what I read and the way I read it was, if, if it makes sense to the board, they have a way to approve it now. In the past, you didn't have a way that you could approve a major home occupancy because the way it was written. Three employees or, or you can only have a, a couple of vehicles or...
Parking in the front.
Something like that. I mean, yeah, it, it...
How about parking? It had to be in the red.
In the red.
You know, it was like, you know, people park in the front because that's the way the driveways are built. You're not going to put a driveway around the back of your house just to comply with this provision, you know?
But it doesn't, it, it doesn't, it clearly doesn't, the way that it was, it's written now, it wouldn't allow for people to, for you guys to do it. The way George wrote it, the new way that he wrote it, it pretty much takes in most of the, the stuff that you guys were, were concerned about. But, you know, you say, well, you know, if it can't, if you can't do it in Bryce Estates, then you can't do it on Glenwood Road. That doesn't make any sense. It's, it's not even normal. I mean, have the discretion that says, okay, you got 10 acres, you're going to park 10 vehicles and you're going to have seven employees, and you've been doing it for the last 30 years. Yeah, go ahead, keep doing it. But now, the way it's written, you can't do that. So if, if, and, you know, new neighbors move in all the time, and if they complain, and they have the right to, it's there, it's, it's the law. So they have the right to, they have the right to complain, and then now the, now the zoning enforcement officer goes down, he shuts the guy down. He's, he's out of business. He's been doing this thing for the last 30 years. This gives the board the, the way that if it makes sense of the way that it's been working, they have the discretion now to approve it. Where that one on Glenwood Place, I think everybody probably had the same feeling. They want, I mean, I went to those meetings. I think you guys wanted to approve it, but you had no way to approve.
I was embarrassed that I had, you know, I thought, and I'm like, incidental, I mean, you know, I'm hired to do this. I pick, I see the word and I know what it means and, and I know legally what it means and, you know, and, and I'm glad he withdrew because under the new bylaw, I'd be able to apply. Um, anyways, that's my, that's my pitch on it.
Any other questions?
I just have two, uh, just a very simple typo in 1A.
I just have two, uh, just a very simple typo in one A. Second sentence, on properties three acres or larger versus of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No biggie, I just, and then, on one F, for discussion, maybe, major home occupations may include the selling of products, the major portions of which products, of, I'm sorry, a major portion of which is produced on the premises. Not while the twenty-five percent of the products sold shall be purchased or obtained elsewhere.
I stole that.
I was, yeah, I was wondering what your, what your thought process on that one was.
So that's what's in there, so I.
I don't like it.
Yeah, and I don't blame you, quite honestly, cause I think, so, you know, that, it's frustrating. You know, I, I think that's, that's a difficult thing, so if somebody has a, um.
Well, the one that comes to me is, yeah, say you're, say you're a mason, not a crusher, you just do walkways for people.
Yeah.
And they come in and they, and you have different bricks that you offer, but your storage of these, you're not, you're not making these bricks for your property, but the hundred percent of your businesses
is.
Walkways, you know, so maybe you need to store some of these, so I just wonder if that becomes, I don't know if it's eliminated, or if it's just more defined as.
So I, I, I kept it in because I, I didn't wanna throw out the baby with the bathwater. I says, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, you know, shake up the whole thing, and, you know, I, I'm saying, this is what's in there, this is fine. What comes to mind is, uh, like a craft store. So if people are selling Christmas wreaths, and that's part of the major home occupation, they got, you know, floral arrangements, stuff like that, but if they get them from another site that brings them in also, so other craft people bring it there, is that qualified? I'm like, and, and this is one of those things that everybody's like, closing one eye to it, cause we're not gonna take an inventory, or find, ask you where you obtained your product. But, yeah, that's in there as well, and, and.
I'm just trying to think of other products that are sold that aren't really manufactured on site, that aren't stored on site, you could buy a product, install it, and it's never even handled until the day of installation, you know what I mean? So there's a lot of things that, uh, home.
Yeah, I have no problem with taking out F altogether.
I'm just up for the board to discuss too.
For my own, for my petition purposes, I wouldn't mind it if the board would, you know, you know, recommend approval with that eliminated, I'd have no objection to it.
What if you were to say something?
What's that? I don't think we can do that.
I don't think we can eliminate it, but.
It has to be presented to the town meeting as the petition.
On the floor. Okay, okay, in order to cross it, you have to do it on the floor.
I'm just kinda curious if the wording could say, major home occupations may include the selling of products, the major portion of which is produced or manufactured on the premises, and then leave it. Cause then they could make the wreath, they could, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Produce.
You're still not making your bricks. You're still not breaking your bricks.
Just say, selling the products, you know, or, you know. I mean, I don't wanna get into a honey farms, on a, you know, that's, I think they didn't want that, you know, so when they was put in, the original mindset was, we're not gonna put in a convenience store in this place. But I, I do, you know, I see places that would, that either have major home occupation, uh, special permits, with, I know products being sold, and I don't very much at those little, that all of the little dolls or Christmas wreaths, uh, manufactured in that house. I'm sure that there, that other, you know, like a consignment or something, people bring them in, and they, you know.
And things have changed since this was written.
Yeah.
No doubt about it.
Well, as you say, that, that's a discussion for the floor, really.
Well, yes, it's all of that.
And, or, something that, uh, zoning can bring back up again, and make another modifications for another town meeting.
But I mean, we can't modify it.
A ferocious overhaul, and then we could just take out, you know, our petition again for next year, and try it for the fall, but I think you need a hundred signatures for the fall meeting. So, um, I could try it again next year to strike out F altogether on this. And there's no pride of authorship, I just threw it together, I mean, I'm, I'm doing this, and like, I saw problems in the past, and, um, and pains of guilt hit me, and I said, I gotta, you know, make amends for, you know, the last hearing I was at, and, uh, see if I can make this better for everybody in town.
Well, George, you, in my opinion, you save some of us on the board a lot of, uh, time, but what you just did.
Good, I'm glad.
Yeah, absolutely.
In all honesty.
It was on our list to try to amend, to do, to work on it, so.
My, my biggest problem is, is not with any of the changes.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's, it's actually with the existing bylaw, and particularly numbers two and three, where the planning board, the, the, the best word I can use is re determining, we have to determine the proper aesthetics to something that's happening. And that is very, very much just a value judgment, and there's nothing specific in there. You know, that says, oh, this limit of, this limit of, this limit of that, and, uh.
In regards to what, height of fence, number of bushes?
Height of fence, number of lights, uh, amount of noise, uh, type of equipment, uh, you know, and.
There's no criteria.
Like, like, say, I just get, I don't know. I don't like having to put a value on somebody else, and, and what they're doing. You know, I like to see, I like to see something written, I don't know how it could be written.
I think, so, I mean, I don't have a great answer on it, you know, I, I think when an application comes in to the board, bear in mind, it's, it's a special permit, so that there are some standards in here that they have to meet. And it's still, to a large degree, a discretionary decision that the board makes. And, you know, the old, you know, the, the old saying about pornography, I, I, you know, I can't define it, but I know when I see it. If somebody comes to you guys and say, I wanna put in a rock crushing operation in Rolling Ridge Estates, and this is the bylaw, you're gonna say, it doesn't belong there. I know when I see it, that it's not there, it's not right for the neighborhood, it's not right for the noise levels, it's not right for, for that. So, you know, but of course, that's a, that's an easy one, we can see, you know, we see it, you'll see that there. Um, and then you may be presented with ones that are, um, less, that, that's just not right, that's more marginal, you're gonna have to deal with that, and, you know, if somebody's saying, listen, I wanna, I wanna do, uh, I build canoes, and I'm in Rolling Ridge Estates, I use a bay in my garage as a canoe shop. Well, you know, I think I could probably deal with that, you know, but, I'm, this is what I'm gonna tell you, hours of operations are X, you know, you're gonna, you know, this is how you're gonna do that, and, and the guy's gonna say, I can live with that in my special permit, you know, to do that. Um, because those are the things that you can see, okay, then, I can deal with that. So, um, you know, rock crushing, Rolling Ridge, you're gonna say, no. Um, you know, uh, you know, an accountant in his, you know, downstairs office, no brainer. Um, the, the guy making boats in his garage, okay, now I'm gonna say, how many employees you got? Well, just me, or I got me and my, you know, my son comes and we do it together. Okay, that's fine, you know, you gotta park your cars there, these are hours of operation, this is what it is, you know, and you, you can go forward on that, at least that's what my thought is on it.
It's a lot better than incidental. I think as, as one comes through, and then the second one comes through, and the third one comes through, then you start to get precedent. And hopefully, our town, people that are existing, I, I mean, again, I think, at least I can think of forty-five, you can drive from one end of town to the other, and, I mean, they're all over the place. And hopefully they'll start to put in for these home occupations, and then the precedent set as to what a, you know, this company, that company, and.
And then you can start limiting them. So let's say, for instance, say that, that site is, so people are doing it right now, there's no particular enforcement, nobody's complaining on X site A, or site B, but everybody knows, we want that on control. If they apply for this thing, you're gonna say to them, you're gonna say, listen, clean it up. You know, I don't like, you know, four being in cars, in your, and, you know, on the property, you gotta clean it up, there's no being in cars on the property, you can't, you know, that's not what this thing is for. Um, if you're, you know, you don't have, you don't throw all your pallets, wood pallets out, and, you know, store them on the side of your garage, we want this place cleaned up. And you can put those kind of conditions in there. Make the, make the property owners, give them, give them the reason to become compliant, number one, and then take responsibility for the way that they conduct their, their businesses, number two.
And number three?
Number three?
Would be, this special permit lasts two years.
Yeah.
Make sure that, you know.
They can come back and revisit, yeah.
We have to start revisiting this, and this is where.
Yeah, you can limit it to an owner.
Put that clause into everyone that we have approved, and we haven't done it directly.
We haven't done it, because we haven't got the personnel to do it.
Yeah. You can limit them to ownership, so.
Yeah.
That's what you had in there, for changes ownership, or whatever changes, but I, I like the two years, because again, you don't know, a business can change in two years, you can go from.
Two employees to ten.
Right, it's not a bad thing, but you gotta make sure that that person's adequately not upsetting said neighbors and everybody else.
Yeah. If I could, oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Hi, um, my name is Tim Gibson, I live in ninety-four Glenwood Road, and again, I apologize, I'm very bad for tonight. Um, I appreciate what all you guys are saying, and, and this, but there's, to me, there's such a thing as becoming too big. Businesses grow, small businesses, you have a good idea, you have a small business, and then you start to add more people, more equipment, more, you got more activities going on, and before you know it, you've become too big for a home business. It's time to go find a property somewhere where you can run your business and expand it to your heart's content. But there's such a thing that if it gets too big, it has a serious impact on the surrounding properties. And that's my, that's, that's my biggest problem. I mean, I have, I have some other issues that I have with the language that, that you, you put in this, uh, this petition uh, as well, and I'm concerned about the number of employees, because, uh, it, in a residential zone, I mean, to have more than ten employees, um, it encourages unlimited use of the property. Especially in a, in a situation where a major part of the business is using heavy equipment. If there's heavy equipment in use, and it's not being used for agricultural farming, then it's a problem, because it creates lots of noise. Uh, you cited some examples where, where businesses are such, where they, they go out in the morning, and they, you know, they go do their thing, and, and they come back home at, at night, and that's great. But the issues I have are the ones that go out and come back, go out and come back, all day long. And it creates lots of traffic, um, lots of noise, um, it's just, it's un, it becomes unlivable. And I, I fear that expanding these rules get us away from being a home business, and it becomes more of an, an industry, or an industrial situation. You get too big, you need to go somewhere else where you can be big, you can be as big as you'd like to be. Go to a business zone, go to a industrial zone, um, but don't try to do it in a residential zone.
Well, I absolutely agree with you, but there would be the conditions in here, I think that would cover that, and I happen to live near you. Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, sorry.
The noisy.
Pardon me?
Heavy duty vehicles should have to stay at least three to five hundred feet from the abutting neighbor's property.
Right, but I think that, like I say, I live on Glenwood Road, and I think that those, that's a different issue that would, that if people had addressed that, it wouldn't have had, you know, it would. I think it's outside the scope of this, what we're discussing tonight. And that if this was in place, and that, uh, business was permitted, it wouldn't have happened the way that it did. Makes sense, yeah.
No permit, but some of us would like to sleep.
Oh, absolutely.
And not be woken up at five o'clock in the morning, not be kept awake until after one in the morning.
I mean, that's not really what this is about.
And at least have weekends off and not have to hear.
Right, as Clea just said, it's not really what this is about, it's a different, different issue. I absolutely agree with you, I mean, considering I live on Glenwood Road, but it's just not, not part of this.
I mean, I don't agree with the idea of, of eliminating the word incidental, incidental in this, in this text, because, I mean, it's a home business, a home based business, so the primary function should be home, not the business. It's great to have a home business, I, I, hats off to all the people that have them.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I understand, and I appreciate that. I, it's just that I think that the two words incidental and subordinate are, um, they're not the same. So, um, but to say incidental obliterates the bylaw from all honest application. There are several applications that are done where we close one eye, and we say it, but it's not incidental. And it's just not, you know, I agree with you that it should be primarily residential. So I'm not disagreeing with you on that, that's what this is. The property is my home, this is my home, um, I work out of it. So, um, and, and I'm not trying to talk on any specific properties, so that's not what the function, that's not the purpose of this, you know, the hearing or the application. This is general bylaw amendment for the entire town. And any individual property should be looked at on an independent case by case basis on application.
I mean, the word incidental means accompanying, but not a major part of something. That's, that's the definition.
It's so entwined with, and so entwined with, and a part of, a part of the residential use.
My, my caution though, in taking that out of there, is that when you allow the business to expand by getting extra, you know, allowing extra employees and, and, and growing that business to a point where it now becomes, that the business is now the, the primary part of the property, and not the residence.
That's just what this is in the way.
This, you know, the application is for a, a major home occupation. If the business grows and they get twenty employees, that's gonna be a, that's not what the bylaw provides for. The bylaw provides for a maximum number of employees. There is a sliding scale based on size, because the larger property can accommodate more employees, can accommodate more cars. You can't put it on a small place where you have two parking spaces.
But yet, on the, on the flip side, you, you go in and you talk about screening and parking, so you wanna have, I don't know, twenty people, and you wanna have them all park in front of a residence?
No, we're putting, that's what we, no, we, they.
But that's, your language says.
This is what they're gonna look at on each, on each application. This is what the board's gonna look at, where is your parking, what are you gonna do, this is what we're gonna do. But, but right now, there's a major home occupation special permit that's authorized for the Dan Studio down on, at the, at the Rufus Pondham House. Auto parkings in front. Clearly not what the bylaw provides, clearly the place for it, it's the place for the parking. So I'm not trying to criticize the board, but we, it's just, we closed it, they, the board closed the eyes and said, we're gonna pass this, even though it says, you can't park in front. So, this gives, this gives the board the opportunity to review each application, whether it's on, uh, East County Road, whether it's on Pleasantale, whether it's, you know, on, on Maple Ave, Glenwood, Main Street, they're gonna look at each application on its stand, on its own merits, and, and impose conditions that will accommodate the concerns of the abuddies. Because if there's no abuddies next door, it's not a big deal, but somebody moves in, they wanna make sure that there's, that the board's gonna be there to protect them, and the bylaw's there to protect them.
So, what happens if a business goes way beyond, you know, they have a special permit?
They're, they're in violation of the special permit. And once they're in violation, that's a, that's a separate enforcement, they can enforce strict on the, so that's the.
But how, what happens, what, what's the, uh, the process?
They, a complaint, the building inspector has the authority to enforce, to strictly enforce the special permit. Just, it's, it's, just like they can enforce zoning, they can enforce a special permit. This is, the, a violation of the special permit is a violation of zoning. So if I'm giving you this special permit, and you violate the special permit, you violated zoning.
So is that, to me, that ties into your question, that if, if that happened with the business, then there's other mechanisms that would come into play.
No, I'm reading, I'm reading.
Plus, this allows for people to come in who are, who are abuddies, and put their concerns to the board, and let the board, right now, right now, the way it's written, forget it, you can't approve anything. I mean, it, it's almost like impossible to approve it, to approve it unless it, it truly is listed a couple of people standing around, and, and looking at each other. at each other. The point is, there's a lot of businesses around in this town, you can drive, Kevin, as Kevin said the other, this a minute ago, you can drive down the road and find forty of these, and, you know, and if, like you said, if somebody new moves in or, or something happens where the neighborhood gets upset, then, you know, they can shut them down.
You know, there's, but there's spot enforcement because, you know, on one side, nobody's complaining, and, you know, somebody complains and, and oh, hell, but breaks through, smoke, people, not persons. You know, Glenwood, not Glenwood, what was it, Glenwood Place?
Yeah, the other place, yeah.
You know, I, I mean, he's got this, you got a complaint, next thing you know, he's gotta do an application, doesn't qualify, we're in a big to-do over it. You know, this would have given the board an opportunity to say, okay, that's a use, but we're gonna limit your hours of operation, we're gonna limit the number of equipment, we can come out, and, and that's there so that they can take a look at that and fit, fit a use for him onto that property, which is what, you know, case is forty, there's probably a hundred businesses that have done this in town. And it just, you know, we just hope that, as far as this applica, you know, it's this petition, I think this, this makes sense for the town of Rutland, as Carolyn constituted and for the future, I hope. So, I, you know.
I mean, to me, it seems like it's a corrective action to make things better because through the lineage of history in town, it's not necessarily that the people that are in business in town did the wrong thing, because at the point in time of their origin, most of the businesses went through the proper channels and they were approved. And then now, as the town has progressed, we're faced these issues because there's more people in town.
I think that there's just, you know, I mean, nobody, I don't think anybody really sets out to stop breaking the rules, but I think it evolved in that, you know, you know, a business matures, you get, you know, one guy, now you got two, you got an assistant that's now helping with them, and so this just gives an opportunity to, to apply, to validate what's mature, you know, what's evolved. That's my two bits.
I would just question the point that most of businesses in town were approved.
Yeah, I would probably, I mean, with zoning, being sixty, seventy years old.
Their, their, you'd be existing businesses.
Yeah, they evolved.
They have somebody, you know. I, I hear what you're saying, you know, somebody might have walked into the town hall and said, can I, you know what I mean? It's not, I don't think that, because we didn't really have that approval process.
Is that the business owner's fault, though, that the town didn't really necessarily?
You know, at the end of the day, yeah, I think the business owner needs to know what its rules and what its, you know what I mean? So, you know, that can go either way, but I think that what this does, I would like to somehow figure a way to two years, five years, maybe it's case by case. Maybe we look at a business that's brand-new that could potentially have large equipment, and we say, okay, we're gonna, come back to us in a year. We wanna, we wanna know how many trucks you own, we wanna know how many, whatever's happening. So I, you know, I don't know if that's case by case, but I like the idea of revisit more than just a transfer.
No, I agree. I think, I do like a revisit. You go in there, and you can limit ownership, you can limit the duration. So if you say, listen, we're gonna approve this thing for two years, we're gonna approve this thing for three years, you know, it's something that, that's there, require, and that might require them to come back in.
Adjust their business.
It's on them. To, it's not on the board to do this. It'll be on them to revisit this, re-advertise, republish, get them in their reporting status, you know, and, and by the way, if they know that that's a condition of their license, and it's a special permit, if that's a condition of their special permit, you know, we get better Navis.
And you just struck on it. It's a license. The special permit is a license.
And to get your license, although, you know, you gotta have, everything else has to be in order, your taxes are gonna be paid, blah, 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 but I think my point was, you know, for us to move forward with any of these, I would hope that maybe after the town meeting, businesses in town would feel comfortable applying for this. That's what I think we all want. We don't want to go out chasing all these businesses. We want, if we, we don't really have a business association, but maybe just word of mouth, like, hey, they got it figured out, get it done, check the boxes, and now all of a sudden, we've got, you know, wouldn't it be nice to have a Rutland Business Guide that has a hundred and fifty businesses in it that are listed and registered, licensed, whatever else.
They're not flying into the radar.
The committee? It'd be something that maybe they should be also involved in, in trying to distribute, expand, or take a look at, too.
Plus, you can charge a permit fee, which would fund being able to monitor and make sure that you follow up with all these businesses, because I forget which one of you four said it, but you said, we've never gotten to that because we don't have the time, we don't have the funding.
That's correct.
Yeah, exactly.
And then we can hire somebody like Tamika to keep the books.
Private consulting fee.
My comment to add is, as far as the screening goes, where there's some restrictions in the current language, and it's, you know, been suggested that that be discretionary. You know, I, I don't think that makes a lot of sense because it's still a residential zone. So the materials that are used for screening have to be in line with neighborhoods. You know, you can't use junk. You can't, you know, there are specific things in here that's chain-link fences and plastic things and concrete block and all that sort of stuff. That's stuff you find in an industrial area. That's not stuff you find in a, in a residential area.
Well, that would still be at the discretion of the board. Those were just suggestions in that, the, you know, the board would still have discretion.
So the charge to the board, then, would be to, you know, to uphold standards. And unfortunately, what I fear would happen is if, on one application, you, you choose to accept one thing, now it sets a precedent for, for future things.
Trust me, they don't do that.
Well, there's no, no precedential value.
Well, I mean, I think that, I mean, I, I've been watching these meetings. I, I really appreciate the work that all of you folks do, and I, and I like, I like the way you guys operate. You guys ask a lot of tough questions of some of the applicants that have for building permits and various things. I just hope that if these changes are adopted, that you guys will continue to, to use, you know, appropriate judgment to make sure that we're not degrading the residential areas.
Well, true.
I appreciate, I, I could tell you, I've been in front of this board for a long time, and I think I, I kind of depend on their good wisdom and judgment. I mean, I know that this, you know, you guys, I know, here you go, but I'm just saying that, you know, I appreciate your concern, but when I, I said, I know the board on dealing with, they know how to do, so, so, just to the materials, right? So the, in the original bylaw, there was no violence. Some of these vinyl fences, vinyl fences are beautiful. They may, you know, there is some, really, if somebody wants to put in a beautiful vinyl fence, you can't. You gotta put in a lousy wooden stockade. That's gonna require painting, it's gonna require upgrade, because the only thing you can use under the current bylaw appears to be wood, because you can't use any other material other than wood for fences.
As long as they're maintained and kept clean.
Agreed, and so that's all.
They tend to get green. White fences tend to get green, you know, or not, you know.
So, you know, I, you know, I, again, I just, I said, and I didn't say that they can't do screening. They can still require screening, and they can still limit materials. So in the right situation, they can say, wooden fence going here. We're gonna put, we're gonna require a wooden stockade. We're gonna require picket fence, you know, we can require that. That's what the board can require if that's, you know, if that's what's at front of them. But I, I kind of took out the handcuffs that were on the board and opened it up.
That's what I wanted to say. Right now, it all boils down to, we have a major home occupancy, state, you know, list the rules that you can approve by, and it ties your hands. Right now, it's impossible for you, hardly, mostly impossible for you to approve anything, because there's always something in there that doesn't apply. What George did was take off the handcuffs and say, look, if it, if it makes sense, then the board can approve it. This, it all boils down to the fact that this gives the board the ability to do the right thing, where right now, it doesn't have that ability at all based on the way that it's written. And I think it's evolved out of the way it was because it was a smaller town, with less people, and, you know, you have a lot of blue collar workers in this town, and one of them, and the fact is that, you know, we, we have, we have our trucks at the house, we have, you know, ways of doing business that it might not, you know, a new neighbor might move in and not approve it. At least we have a way now to come in and, and get in front of the board and have the, you guys have the ability to, you know, with the input of the neighbors. I mean, but still, you know, there might be some things that we do that makes everybody happy, but you have the ability now to enforce those things and approve those things where in, on the current, with this, I mean, with the current one.
I mean, the current bylaw is just a disincentive to abide.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not gonna abide because I ain't gonna, there's, nobody's gonna qualify. But anyways, that's what it is.
That's what I think it boils down, but this gives you a lot more flexibility to do the right thing.
I think we're starting to go around in circles here.
Yeah. I do like, if I could just, on five, we talked about that, two years or four years or five years, so on this one, to go through, the special permit made, at any time, be subject to review, handed or renewed by the board, and may be further conditioned, amended, or revoked as necessary to ensure that the intent of this section is maintained. So in a day, a complaint comes in, they bring it in, we say, okay, get the business owner in here, psych plant, walk, blah, 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 you go through it. So basically, as a, if a complaint comes in, we have the right to do what needs to be done to keep everybody happy.
I just want to reinforce this whole concept of precedence. Precedence is virtually a non-issue here. Every special permit is going to be granted or denied based on its specific circumstances, unless you happen to have two applications that are identical, identical. Then, yeah, you might.
Which is virtually impossible.
Which is virtually impossible.
No, I, I agree. There's no precedential value. I've never, you've never come to this board saying, you did it for him, you gotta do it for me, you know, I can, you know.
Okay, any further comments?
Just a quick comment. So, if this is recommended and town meeting votes it, this will apply to any existing condition which does not have a special permit and which is not, non-conforming. This doesn't sanction existing conditions.
It does not grandfather any use. It doesn't give, doesn't give any validity to existing uses that do not have a special permit. If there are uses out there in violation of the bylaw, they're in violation of the bylaw. This doesn't give them, all this does is open the book up to people for application, and it opens up the entire, entire town. It's not limited to location. It's, the whole town can apply for this, and it's not a grandfathering, and it's not recognition of any, you know, you know, we're not giving amnesty. There's no amnesty. Everything is still a hundred percent, uses as, as they are, and if it's a violation, it's a violation. It gives a potential avenue of relief, but it doesn't give any amnesty or grandfathering.
I just wanted that to be clear. Anybody who might be tuning in on this, to understand what this does and what it doesn't do.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. That's a good point. That's.
What about current special permit holders of major home occupations?
Well, they have theirs, so they're gonna have their special permit. If they, I suspect if they have a special permit under the original bylaw, they're gonna qualify under this one. This is, this is probably.
So it will affect that.
Well, it, it's gonna open up an error. So if they want to apply for a new application for special permit, they could, but there's no.
Would they have to?
Well, they would have to.
They should.
Well, special permit, how many years ago did we issue it?
You have to look.
Well, then, most of them are gone.
How many do we currently have, right?
The only.
Central Oil.
Central Mass Oil. And the woodworking shop over at Fort Worth.
There you go.
Dance studios not open? The dance studios not, the, that was a major home occupation.
You're honestly, well, my town, remember.
No, I honestly don't, I don't.
It's a long time.
That was one, and there was one for the bed and breakfast. She had two. I, no, I'm not trying to stir up any business.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, George.
I don't have a memory of that one.
Those, both of those uses would qualify, so, under the new bylaw. This does not, this does not render any existing one in violation. It only opens up review and opportunity for property owners.
Any further questions, comments?
Anybody here? Anybody on the screen?
I don't see anybody who's interested in getting out of this conversation.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Are we prepared at this time to make a recommendation? Personally, I think I would rather wait a little bit. I think, I don't know, I need to get this one some time, but that's just me.
If the recommendation's made at the next meeting, it still gets on.
Oh, yeah.
And amend, amend amendments? Yeah, amendments to this, at this point, are not.
I don't think they was talking about, we're gonna keep having, come back.
Basically, here's what it is for this going on, right?
Obviously, the type of, of, to wash.
Right, right, but as far as anything else that we discussed, it would have to be from the fall or second, next spring.
Yeah, yeah.
Did, our building inspector read this, Maggie Jones?
No idea.
Just didn't know if he had.
I sent it to him. I sent it today. I don't know if he read it or not, but I did send it to him.
We haven't gotten any comments from him.
I don't have any comments from the goal.
No, I'm just curious if you had a chance to take a look at it or not.
Personally, I thought it, you know, with a couple of exceptions that I discussed with you, I thought it was, was, you know, well-written and adequate and dovetailed nicely with existing.
What's the pleasure of the.
So I'm, I mean, I personally don't have to write. I would be agreeable.
Wait, I like that, number five, that gives us the availability to go back on existing and new at any time.
I'll accept the motion.
I will make a motion that we forward this to the selectmen with the recommendation that we approve. Is that the right word?
Favorable recommendation.
Pardon me?
Favorable.
Favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We're lucky, folks.
Okay.
Thank you. As the chairman of the bylaw subcommittee, thank you.
Tell me what else you want me to look at. Tell me what issue you want to look at. I'll do my best. No, no pride about this shit. Chalk it up, rip it up, anything you want. I'm happy to jump. I think the bylaw needs a lot of work. If there's something you want me to look at, I'll give you my two cents, obviously. All right?
We're not meeting, probably not until.
June, July?
In June, July, but I will.
I'll come down and.
I will definitely keep, keep that in my mind.
Okay. Item seven. We have another public hearing on the zoning amendment, the city 's pitch up. I don't know, I'm gonna read them all. I amend the Rutland zoning bylaws and zoning map so as to change the zoning district from residential high sixty to business for all property zones on the zoning map, being all the land between the northwest side of Wachusett Street and Glenwood Road to East County Road, all the land between the southwest side of East County Road, between Wachusett Street and Glenwood Road, and all the land between the east side of Glenwood Road and the southeast side of East County Road, and northwest side of Wachusett Street, excluding such land on the East County Road, currently zoned as light industrial office. Here we have it down here, representing the petition.
Again, George Curtie, I submit this application to one to East County Road. So Rutland, this deals really with the zoning map, and the Rutland zoning map is. So Rutland, this deals really with the zoning map, and the Rutland zoning map is woefully sparse in business areas. Just try to.
Would you have the whole town map? Show the R60s and the, I don't know if that's something you could put up here or not.
Yes, you share, would you like to see the zoning map?
Yeah.
Sure, just give me a few minutes.
So, the idea is that, you know, you look at this, I had heard through the great bind that there was talk about identifying new places for business zones, again, no pride of the authorship, but knowing that there's been discussion in this area, I said, I'll put pen to paper, scratch up the map, and ask for a zone change for business. There is a very small section of this area which I identified that's already business on East County Road, it seemed kind of, lack of a better word, illogical, you know, that's the problem I have with, I mean, as a citizen and petitioner, I look at the zoning map, and there's just no logic to the map. It just seems as though the map has evolved from uses, rather than the uses evolved to the map. So, the idea was to tackle this and try to take a look at, you know, where this is and see if we can start reining it in, you know, identify business areas.
Hey, shh, quiet.
Okay.
There's a guy behind you.
Yeah, I know, he owns all the business areas.
No, we were in the process.
Okay.
And I'll never forget it, for crying out loud, we're in, taking a look at a problem down on River Road.
River Road.
And when we're coming back on 68, we had just mentioned about, talking about business districts on both sides of the road, and lo and behold, what happened? A subdivision came in, and that blew that whole area.
Let me tell you something about that, one of the beautiful things about the Rutland zoning bylaw, because Rutland is this cumulative bylaw, so it's, it's restrictive, so if it's not allowed, it's, it's prohibited, so we start with this, this restrictive bylaw, but we accumulate uses, everything in the residential use, you know, you can do A and B in the residential use, in the, in the multifamily or the multi-residential, you can do everything in residential and multi. In the business, you can do everything in single residential, you can do everything in multi-residential, you can do everything in business, and so we accumulate our uses. So this change in the zoning map does not change anybody's intended use of their property. Anybody who wants to use their property for residential purposes, under the current bylaw, is absolutely free to do that, residential subdivisions, whatever, they can still do that, it doesn't take away, by making a business, doesn't take away anybody's rights to use their property, but it does open up the business chapter to them because it doesn't exist now. Right now, we're so, because we're, because we're restrictive, this doesn't, but if you, so you look at the property, says, it's gonna be perfect for business, but it's residential, well, they can do that here, but it also says, I wanna do this for business, and it may open it up for business, so if we don't have the zoning, but, I mean, there's, you know, there's little pockets of business here and there.
Yeah, spot zoning way back.
Yeah, spot zoning way back when, and you look at this and, you know, countryside estates is a multifamily, right? But it's own business, because you could do multifamily in a business, so what they did was, I suspect, is they built the multifamily and then said, well, let's call it business, and it's just that one property, and that's what we see in all these pockets, a lot of pockets, and there's been some heroic efforts over the last 20 years, Town Center District, expanded the different Villas Districts, love that stuff, no, no issues on that, this is again, just opening up the business, this area for, for business, which doesn't stop residential use, but does open up a portion of the bylaw for a portion of the town. That's what my thoughts were, and that's the reason why the application's in.
I too have a question.
By the way, I'm sorry, can I just say one thing? So, because we're making this right, because I'm proposing this to be residential, any proposed use of the property going forward, any construction or anything else, will then open those uses up to site plan review, which isn't available now for, you know, on this stuff, so that if they're doing this, they still need site plan review, which allows you to do a whole ton of requirements, but there's gonna be site plan review, we're gonna look at traffic flows, we're gonna look at noise, we're gonna look at hours of operation, we're gonna look at lighting, these are things that we can do now under the business district because anything we do there is gonna require a site plan review, and I didn't have to put that into the bylaw, I just had to change the designation. This, this now gives the, the site plan requirements. So you see little pockets of property, and I'm having trouble seeing what, so here, so this is, so right here is the soft storage areas that we, we know there.
Yeah.
This here, I think is probably Town Old Land, is that what that is?
And also.
Strip pubs. Yeah, that's where we can put, that's where we can put adult entertainment, adult entertainment on Town Old Land. We have small little pockets of business use, here is your, here's your town center and all that stuff, beautiful stuff.
Yeah.
But there's just, you know, woefully little business district, and if the town's looking for business, it, by the way, as I said, it's not eliminating residential uses, it's opening it up, those still stay there under our current bylaw structure. So, I don't know, this is, this is all, what's, what's yellow on them?
And the yellow's residential, that's the R40.
Oh, that's the R40 versus the R60, I got it, you got, thank you, thank you. So, I mean, you got a couple of business pockets up here.
What's the strike area?
Molten Pond.
So that's gonna be an overlay, that's gonna be some kind of water shed. So, you know, I guess, and I don't know that there's a whole lot else, that's why I've done this, so that's what the application's about.
You want to say anything else?
So I have a question for you.
The area, the subject area?
No, there's a gentleman in here, in the corner.
So, going back to our previous discussion on the other topic, how would, how would that apply if this were designated as a business zone?
Then it would be, then it would be open.
Does the whole home business, all that permitting go out in this zone completely?
No, no, so there's still, so if you fall under that, so if you fall under category that's allowed business use in the business zone, because the business doesn't, business zone has uses, but not every business, one thing I, I learned, we learned the highways, that not every business is, is allowed in a business zone, so there are a bunch of uses that, ever going back a couple of years, years and years and years ago, in a industrial zone, which has all of the business uses were allowed, wants to put, you know, a driving range in minicots, and they're saying, no, that's not a business, so of course it's a business, but they, they ruled that that was not appropriate, you know, that was not a permitted business use. So, business uses would be able to, any, any properties in this, if this were passed, any, any, any uses that would be allowed in the business zone would be allowed as a right in that district, and that would be as a right, they, if they didn't need to file for a major home occupation, they would then qualify for a business, they could qualify for it as a right. So that's what this application is, this is to some degree.
But it would not affect our Moose Hill, 2.41 and 2 up there, those are open space.
Okay, so they're gonna still be under their own requirements?
Still be there.
So they're gonna, because they've got special permits, so they're gonna be still, they're gonna still be bound by their own terms of their zoning relief, that's correct.
And also the zoning area for water.
Just for a little clarification for the rest of you out here, the area that they're proposing, it starts off off the map here, down here, down here, down here, to where this road comes in, out here, and back to 68, this entire area is what they're talking about.
No, I, I had kinda heard through the grapefruit that that was kind of a discussion, so that's the reason why I created those boundaries, I put that thing together.
No, I, I, in all honesty, I, I believe that at least quite half of it, for Christ's sake, is, is excellent.
So, and be reminded that, just because it's open, doesn't mean that, it's not, you know, so there are a lot of places that are business now, and people are still building houses on them, you know, Main Street is, is, is business, and Sushi built a whole bunch of houses down Main, because it's still, we're still a bedroom community, still residential use, so the mere fact that we have business land doesn't mean it's gonna be jumped into business, but we, we're running out of business land.
So, so under, under that premise then, if I live on, in a residential, so I live in this area, so if, if my neighbor decided he wanted to open a garage to do vehicle repairs, so he'd be allowed to do that in this?
He'd have to get the appropriate permitting, if he's gonna build a garage, he's gonna have to get, if he's doing any work on a building, he's gonna have to apply for site plan review, because any alteration of a commercial building.
What do you think that would do to my property value?
I think it might, you can use your property for business, it might increase, it's a business property.
I don't think so.
Well, I don't, I'm not, I'm not an appraiser, but, you know, it is, it's available.
My concern with this whole thing is if, is if you open this up to, to a business zone, you're gonna drive the property values down for 100-plus homes that are already existing, it was also gonna drive down the assessed value of those properties, it's gonna drive down town revenue tax base, and it's gonna cause an increase in overall tax rate for the rest of the town to make up for it.
So I, I would just, through the chair, I, I don't see that happening at all, what I, what I do see, see, the thing is, you gotta remember, this is not eliminating any residential use, it doesn't mean you can't use it residentially, just because, so some towns in a business zone, you can't use resident, you can't use business land for residential purpose, that's not what Rutland does, so it's, everything is gonna stay exactly the same, except it opens it up, which when you open up uses, you open up value, it means that this becomes, this is a more attractive site because it's, because more uses are available to it.
How many, how many acres are involved?
I don't know, I, I don't, I don't.
Why?
I'm sure that, I, no, I don't know, thousands, um.
Far off, thousand? It's a big chunk of it.
Probably, but, um, 1,200 acres, roughly.
Yeah.
I mean, I know that we could.
I'll look at them all, so I know.
Calculated out, I mean, obviously, I, I think that, to some degree, it, it's not, so, let's take a look at the, the area, it's not as though there are, it's heavily, you know, road, there's not a roadway network in there, it's not as though a lot of the property, you know, that there's a ton of roadway inside, so it's unlikely that you're gonna have a whole ton of interior business uses, there's still, if there is development inside, those are probably gonna be residential uses, it's, it's a lot of roadway to build in order to build for business, but if somebody who has 500 acres in the center of the area and they wanna put in a nice business that complies with zoning bylaw, it's an opportunity for the town.
I thought earlier I heard someone.
I was just gonna agree with this gentleman sentiment a little bit, just, it may be maintained as residential, but if there's some giant business that goes in there, and my house is right next door to it, that's not why I moved here, I don't wanna live right next door to a giant business, I.
Go to Western and do that.
Yeah, that, it's not mixing, mixing business with residential, and when a lot of us came out here not to live next door to that, if there's certain areas in town off of more main roads where it can be restricted to, that would make more sense, but if it's right, mixing it is, is not, for me, for me, I wouldn't wanna, want that next to me, too much, that's, that just brings traffic, more traffic to the area, just.
Yeah. Befriend, it's way.
One thing, if this was all undeveloped land, we're not talking about undeveloped land, there are people living there, families there.
Peter?
My question is, if the two LIO zones, the light office, light industrial office zones go away or converted to business, what can't go there any longer?
So the.
They're not proposing to change those.
No, they were explicitly included that night. Did I, did I hear that incorrectly?
Excluded.
Excuse me, I apologize.
So, the types of businesses that could go in here by definition would be like Home Depot, with Home Depot there and there?
No, I think that's probably gonna be under the LI, you know, in the, in the industrial, I think what you're gonna be looking, or maybe it is, but that's, I mean.
Home Depot, you'd never be able to drive enough cars down there, I mean, I know what you're saying, but, you know, a big place like that, it never, would never work.
You could have a restaurant, I mean, I think you can have a restaurant in the business district, you can have retail in the business district, you can, I'm just trying to think of the, I mean, there's the zoning bylaw.
Sales rooms, showrooms, no one used automobile lots, stores, place of business for conduct, wholesale, retail, business, not involving manufacturing, radio and television stations, banks, office buildings, cleaners, telephone exchanges, business garages, garage repair shops, public garages, gasoline stations, drive-in theaters, halls, clubs, dance academics, places of instruction, drive-ins, restaurants, dining rooms, lunchrooms, hotels, motels, that's the current business.
That's the business that could go in there, which is under.
Right next to your home.
There hasn't been, so we don't have, you know, with the existing zoning bylaw, that that language has been in place since the early 60s, there's no drive-in theaters in Rutland, there's no, I don't know that anybody's building drive-in, there's not, there's no hotels, motels being built, there's none of those, that's not the type of businesses that Rutland's been building, they can't get anything up at the, any business used to go up at the old, you know, the, the center of town, the state hospital, you can't find business coming, love to get business in, there's no business in, there's no business base, but this at least opens a place up, if somebody wants to put a barber shop in a corner of the, you know, at the corner, they can do it, at least that's, you know, and, and I appreciate, I appreciate the concern, but there is, the map has no business, we have, we have it in our bylaw, we got pages dedicated to it, and there's no opportunity.
Why that area, not some other area then?
This is the area that I, that I, that I tackled, so.
Why not Rutland Heights?
What's that?
Why not Rutland Heights?
Rutland Heights has their zoning, and you can't find a tenant up there.
There is.
Oh, you got somebody?
Yeah.
He meant when?
It's residential housing.
Senior housing.
Residential, there you go.
Senior housing.
Couldn't get a business, can't get, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's great, the likelihood is, the truth is, that it's probably gonna stay residential, but the book opens up, we open up the whole chapter that's not otherwise available because there's no other place, if you tear down countryside estates, maybe you can put a business there, nobody's gonna tear down countryside, we don't want countryside torn down, you wanna find a place to put a new business.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, this seems like phase two of the correction of the problems in town, where if you have a business that is gonna be supporting the community in some facet, to have a legal place to purchase a property, live there, go through the site plan review, and, and, and change the way it's been, but without places to go, and without a bylaw that you can work with, we're at zero.
Yeah, it's common before, sometimes you gotta move, where they gonna move? You want our business to move to Holden? You want those guys to move out of town, move to Hobbitson?
You just said that Rutland Heights is zoned for business.
And they're using it for residential, because there's no place to go, they're not there, so this is, this opens up, this opens up the, so, the problem is, the bylaw is very restrictive, by opening it up, by putting land on the map, it opens it up, and it doesn't, doesn't take away anything from existing homes, every, every use that's permitted now, every use that's permitted now will continue to be, to be permitted.
What this opens up, going back to our previous discussion, is all those businesses that are in the. that are in the town that were talked about for special permitting, and, and expanding all of that, expanding the number of employees and all that other stuff, that would allow them to get in, because it's a business zone, there'd be no restrictions on that.
So, they'd have to buy there as a, so that, so what they do is, they'll apply for the special permit for major home occupation, if they're granted to stay there, if they're not-
But it's not a home occupation, it's a business zone.
No, no, in, in where they are, so if they're on Pleasantale and they apply for a major home occupation, and the board grants a major home occupation, that's fine, if not, they're forced to look for another place, either they're gonna go to Paxton, or they're gonna go to Hubbardston, or they're gonna Holden, or they're gonna come here, because there's no other place for Rutland to have them.
You just said Rutland Heights is zoned for, they can go there.
Rutland Heights is not an opportunity for small businesses, are it?
It's owned by the town, and has to, RFP has to go out for everybody, and it's a pain.
You can't buy, you can't buy Rutland Heights, property owners not gonna, uh, uh, business owners not buying the Rutland Heights property, and it took years, for, I mean, they looked forever for, for commercial or business people, did they?
And we did, we had somebody come in, and then all of a sudden, all the wetlands, issues popped up-
So, we're back to residential.
And they, and they walked away.
Welcome to our world.
We're back to residential.
Okay, so it's residential, so make, make that area a business zone.
It's a business zone that's being used for residential purposes, which is what's happening in, in a lot of the business zones, and that's, I just-
But the difference is, there are no homes on it yet.
Yeah, I just-
Cause we're not allowing it.
In an effort to, in an effort to, you know, to, put some pink on the map, put some-
The town is hemorrhaging because there's not enough business in town.
No business, no business districts, this at least creates one, and it doesn't create a spot lot, like the corner of, of Palmer Gussit, so we put a little, okay, we have a little church, here we have, this property's there, we look at, we, you look at, um, over here, which is right where my house, across from mine, this area here is so thin, so narrow, so we have these tiny little spot lots of what's gonna be allowed for business, you know, that, yeah, this is three hundred feet deep, you can, you squeeze that thing in there, but the rest is out, you know, you know, and so all you're gonna get there is, you know, self-storage, rather than, you know, something, if you're, if you're looking for some kind of, some kind of business opportunity, this is, this is the place to put it, it's sixty-eights available, it's right there, it's not bad, it's not far from the center, it's got good access to the fire, you know, this is where you're gonna put your, you know, the, the business, at least that's what my thought was, and that's the reason-
Sixty-eight is a major road though, like Watchuset and Glenwood.
Well, this is on sixty-eight, this is on sixty-eight.
Watchuset is getting to be a very expansive road right now for traffic, to try to get to one ninety, because of the traffic in Holden, they're looking elsewhere to get to their destination.
This, this still allows the residential, I owned a piece of land in Shrewsbury that I wanted to build a house on, but it was zoned commercial, I couldn't, and I couldn't get them to change it, we tried to change it, that member, that was-
Yeah, it was a bl- bl- bl-.
And we had, we had, we ended up not being able to use it at all for, for residential.
No, this is, this is far from, it's not far from the senior center, it's not far from schools, I mean, there's things that could be put there, daycare could be put there, it could, you could open it up for that kind of activity that makes sense, you know, that's in the neighborhood, so, I mean, that, so, you look at a place that, okay, it's got the seniors, if they wanna go for, you know, breakfast or, or something like that, um, nursing home, that can go there.
So, are you finished?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I, I think I have a picture of what you're saying, but what's concerning me, and, and as not quite enough butter here, or, but also as a member of the board, this seems like an, except on sixty-eight, most of this, uh, land on the roadways is already developed residential, is that correct?
There's a lot of residential development on the road, not all of it, so there's-
The existing road, except for sixty-eight.
So, sixty-eight's got some openings on, there's no business, or there's, there's, sixty-eight here, we have the, the self-storage, that's kinda relatively recent, um, not any, you know, current lawful businesses in the area, uh, because it's not zoned for that, the, if we were able to put it, actually, it doesn't come all the way down here, so where, where is the, I'm just trying to think, this is it right here, so this is it here, there are, there's still a lot of open parcels that would be available in there, uh, with frontage, you, you could bring it in, maybe put a, if you wanna do, you know, a retirement home, a community center there, you know, a retirement community, um, you could do that, not just an over fifty-five, but a nursing home facility, if that's something that, you know, might be, uh, in, in, you know, property owner's wheels, not available right now, we don't have that under current zoning, so that's the reason why I throw that out.
Okay, just a little bit of history here, uh, back on, gonna say it was probably ten years ago, or a little bit more, when the, the bylaw subcommittee investigated, and that's how we created the light industrial zones, uh, along with town, center, districts, and that sort of thing, we did a pretty good search of properties, one of our major premises was, anything that we were gonna change, let's say, to industrial or to business, should be a place that will have a minimal, minimal impact on existing residential use, okay?
Yep.
Hold on, uh, I will tell you right now, unfortunately, we found that a very, very difficult, uh, premise to hold, simply because residential use is scattered throughout the town.
Yep.
Uh, that said, uh, I think there could be some improvements to this, significant improvements, by at least looking at that concept, let's minimize impact to existing developed residential use.
Let me, so, so I agree with you, so one of the things, when you look at any of these roads, any of the, certainly any of the ma, so if you're gonna do business, if you're gonna do a business use, you're gonna have so, the, the roadway system that's gonna ultimately serve that, has to be more than, um, a subdivision road, so, you know, you're not gonna put, you're not gonna put it at the end of, you know, a subdivision, so, you look for places that have some decent roadway infrastructure, which would be Glenwood, Watchuset, sixty-eight, and it's close to emergency services, which is, you know, close enough, it's not like on Pleasantale on the other side of the town, you know, it's not going down, all the way down Maple, this is still pretty close to emergency services, this is close to, uh, community, um, needs or community services such as senior housing, it's close to the school, so that there is some already, um, institutional infrastructure there, that's why I looked at this, then you look at the, the roadways, knowing that there is in this section of the town, there is sparse little roadways from side to side, so, so the, it's not, if you were to look at all of the frontage lots on any road, Maple Ave, all loaded up with frontage, everything, if you go down, all the way down Maple, you got houses all the way, you look all the way down, um, sixty-eight is pretty good, but sixty-eight has some openings that we can do, um, that, that can so, you know, fit in there, um, over in this area, over here, this is all opened up, over here on, off of Palmer Gussit, that opens up, not Palmer Gussit, Glenwood, Glenwood, sorry, Glenwood, it opens it up, so these things are still there, and if you're gonna put in, you're gonna, it's probably gonna be more deep into the property, which means it's gonna require an access into the property, which is not gonna be, cause you're not, it's unlikely anybody's tearing down houses to build their business, but you're gonna be putting it back, and every use, by the way, every use that would have to go in there, is still gonna require site plan approval, it's still gonna require traffic studies, it's still gonna require, um, traffic flows and patterns, you know, trip generation, see what the use is that's gonna be in there, I mean, you know, I look at other areas of town, and, and it's like, yeah, I mean, maybe, you know, you can, you know, put it, but, but where, you know, you're gonna put it off of Ridge Road, um, up in, and you got the same thing, all of Ridge Roads off, I mean, that's the thing, is every one of your, every one of your, um, your roadways, major roadways, have houses, so you're gonna have to look what's behind it, and where is there no roadways now, you know, where do you see no roadway, and then again, you also gotta think, what's gonna be, if you're gonna make a business, you know, sure, we have this here, which is for adult entertainment, that nobody's ever gonna use, because it's town-owned, and you're not gonna put it there, so other than just putting it on the map for the sake of saying it's on the map, it's just lip service, make it where it's actually gonna be usable, if I were to decide to put, you know, if you wanna make the Pleasantale area on the, you know, on the, the Paxton border, or, you know, in that direction, um, yeah, what business is going there, what, what business are you even hoping to draw there, because, you know, yeah, we opened up a hundred acres or five hundred acres, you know, at, at, you know, at, on Pleasantale, the only thing you're gonna get there is solar farms, because there's no, no businesses are gonna actually locate there, but this might actually get a nursing home, this might actually get, you know, a, a daycare, and if you're gonna do it, I mean, that's, I mean, it just, I look at the map and I say, it, it's, it's an embarrassment to see five po, five pockets of pink, you know, the, the largest piece of commercial property is where the, is the cell tower on, on Campbell Street, or that, that giant tower, that's business, it seems, it, it's ridiculous.
Drag it down to Hubbardston line?
Hubbard's north.
We used to have it down there, and they got rid of it.
No.
So, we used to have it up on Rivet Road and, and, uh, um-
JBC's satellite office somewhere. Yeah, probably had been, uh-
Look at the pocket that we're talking about.
Yeah, that's, that was spot zoning way back.
I know, it's spot zoning, this is what we're looking at, so I says, wait, instead of spot zoning, let's do some planning.
Keep dragging it down, and I don't think it's gonna change color, but, uh, I was just wondering if the pink was way up on the border of Hubbardston and Rutland, is the, is the-
They used to be, it used to be there.
Is, is-
North Rutland.
North Rutland Center, yeah, Village Center.
The Village Commercial Area?
Yes.
Yeah, it's also an industrial area in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, even a little further out.
That's not loaded properly, I don't-
Yeah.
It's right, thank you.
Norman, were you gonna say something else?
No.
No?
Not with this one.
I mean, I understand the logic of three major access root points with a large amount of land in between, it's not necessarily building business on the roadside, it's accessing the land that's within.
It's putting, it's making it available inside, I'm not expecting any, and by the way, if somebody owns that land, and they wanna tear down their house, and they wanna build a business, at least it's available to them to do that, and they don't have to, because Rutland zoning is cumulative, it, we haven't wiped out one use available, those uses are all, everything under residential stays there, if somebody wants to come in with a residential subdivision, God bless you, they wanna come in with a forty B, God bless you.
Yeah.
But if you wanna come in there with a business, you can look at it.
And trust me, when you hear the situation up in Hubbardston, Route sixty-two and sixty-eight, they wanted to put a Dunkin' Donuts and a gas station in there, and, uh, somebody got to before, and got it rezoned, so, couldn't go.
Yep.
What a shame.
It is.
It is.
That'd be a perfect spot, and that's one thing you said, planning, and that's how I, you know, I look at, and to the respect of everybody that's talking, you know, when their, their homes and their residences, and, but fifty years from now, a hundred years from now, you know, Rutland, as I've seen, is a bedroom community, and I think it will be, but I think we need to make some space for some business to come into this town, because it changes, and as you talk about, I spent three years on the Board of Assessors, so, you know, tax rates, um, and houses versus businesses, you know, I'd love to see some million-dollar homes, and I'd love to see some other businesses, cause they're generating revenue when it increases, um- You're not gonna see anybody build a million-dollar home in that area, you change it. Well, I'm just saying in general, in general, it brings up that tax rate, businesses will bring up a tax rate on the, on the property, so, um- And you're gonna lower the tax rate on all the existing home? You wouldn't lower the tax rate. You're gonna lower, you're gonna lower the assessed values.
I don't agree.
I don't think you would either, I don't think you'd lower the assessed values or the tax rate until-
I had my property deed researched, and it was R sixty, and I traced it back to Raymond Klein, who owned this area, and I had my property rezoned as business, because it was zoned incorrectly, my assessor rate went up, so there's the answer.
That's the reason why I've done it, you know, it, it's, I think that, um, I jumped on board, I think I jumped in both feet.
I'll tell you one thing, you know, getting people together like this and having discussions like this is a big thing for this town, and, um, I'm gonna calm down a little bit, because I really like to go off the deep end here, but I think the town needs to bring in the people, have discussions about this, have discussions with their senators and representatives, because forty-nine was supposed to go down by Long Pond, take all the traffic from Sturbridge all the way up to New Hampshire, they quit it, one ninety, what happened to that, that was supposed to go to New Hampshire, they quit that too, why didn't we get Market Basket here, they said, because you don't have the transportation easement to get to your town, they would've loved to have been to town here, because it would draw in so many of the surrounding towns.
The physical footprint of Rutland isn't conducive for business anyway.
That is correct.
Can't get there from here.
Yeah.
I built my house in nineteen eighty, there's less businesses here now, I mean, there used to be five gas stations in town.
Yeah.
They're gone.
Hundred, there's a hundred-room hotel, a hundred years ago, there's a hundred-room hotel, the center of town.
Yeah.
You know, and you can't give away the land on, uh, the state, um, on Maple Ave.
No, but we, we, in the process, we were, to sign the papers, they've got the plans in front of us right now.
And that's, that's a plus, but I mean, there's gonna be a prison here, then there was Market Basket, then there was all kinds of things, where did they go?
The prison, yeah.
Because you can't get there from here.
Yeah, it's too bad about the prisons, the people in town rejected that.
But on one twenty-two side, it goes right into Worcester Pleasant Street, that's the best access in the town, is from Route one twenty-two.
The problem with that is, that you end up in Tannic Square, and you're still a million miles from anything.
I had a business, and I had to travel from Rutland to different areas.
That's my-
You have to go through Holden, which takes twenty minutes to get to Holden, after you get to Holden on one ninety, you can go anywhere, you go through Tannic Square, same deal. You go through Tannic Square to get to the highway, it's a forty-minute excursion, it's not a good access point.
I go up to Tannic Square, Tannic Square's a hundred miles from anything, and then if you're gonna go to, if you're leaving from Rutland to Tannic Square, you know, you still, by the time you get to Tannic Square, you still have a hundred miles to go.
We're, we're going way, way far.
I know, okay, I'm sorry. I, I've said my, my pitch.
You people better start thinking, how, how are you gonna have, handle traffic in this town as it's going through Holden right now, there was supposed to have been a bypass forty years or fifty years ago, and all the businesses kicked it out, and right now, I went, I went to Holden to ask them, let's have a, have a communications, they never got back to me, never.
When that discussion came up, Bobby Benson, from Benson's Clothing, was probably one of the most-
He was.
Vocal people, and I actually lived in Holden at that time, and I said to Benson, do you really think someone coming from Worcester is going to cross traffic on Main Street to buy a necktie from you, I said, if they put the connector road in, you'd end up with more business, and all the businesses on Main Street said, oh, we're gonna go out of business, and what happened to the connector road?
Okay, okay.
All right.
You know-
Sorry.
I don't care.
All we have to do here tonight is whether or not it's gonna be recommended to go to the war, it's a random board's decision.
My last comment is, I think this is absurd, this is totally ridiculous, for, for all of us residents that have homes in the area, to redistrict the whole thing.
And given how dangerous Glenwood Road is, I see people almost getting hit in front of my house by some trucks that won't slow down to anyone.
I, I think, another major problem that I have is, what, at least I believe, we have here, is one man's idea, I'm not saying it's a bad one, I'm just saying it's one man's idea of what's the best place to put a business on in the town, and I don't think that is a reasonable procedure to follow.
I think we get ten, we get ten, so first of all, we got over ten since it's signed, and, and it's gonna still, bear in mind, it's still gotta be approved in the town, And it's gonna still, bear in mind, it's still gotta be approved at the town meeting. So it's not, is that, you know, you can make...
How many of those people actually live in this area that signed it?
It's, it's the citizens of the town, this is not changing.
Glenwood, Glenwood, Glenwood.
Anyway, I, I, I would, you know, I firmly agree. Yes, we need a lot more business on the area.
Yeah.
I would certainly much rather see a proposal that is brought out, say, by a committee like the Economic Development Commission, who looks at the whole town.
Seen twenty years because...
Will it actually happen or...
Twenty years.
You can't.
Will it?
No.
Well, there's, there has been, the Bylaw Committee has been working hard this spring to try to, try to improve things. I mean, we have people, we have committees that are, whose...
Right down the street.
Whose positions are to, to look at these kinds of things. And I agree with you that they should be looking at this.
As near as I know, you know, this Economic Development Commission, the committee, is brand new. Uh, they have, I guess, been given the general charge of whether something like that would happen is probably going to be up to our new town administrator, whenever we get one.
We're never gonna do his own change. We're gonna still, I mean...
They're supposed to be looking, you know, at Economic Development, that's their name. So that, that, that's my take on it anyway.
So the question of whether or not the Planning Board wants to, we have to make a recommendation, and what's that recommendation going to be?
Do we close the hearing first and then go?
Yeah, we'll close the hearing first. Is there any other comment before we do close the hearing?
Should we make a recommendation tonight or do we, could you make it next meeting? As you say, time to think and no gun.
We can.
I mean, I just...
Actually, before you get to the discussion, would you just like to close out the, the hearing itself? You had a motion, it was a second.
Well, that's what I'm just curious, yeah, if we close it, then we can't continue it. If you close it, you close it, you have to make a decision. So before you close it, then it's...
At some point.
Am I right?
And I suppose technically we could continue.
But there's no, no more public, you guys can still deliver.
You can't have information submitted, you can do whatever you want, you can take months.
A recommendation can be made after the hearing, after this hearing is closed. This is not your typical special permis, so you're a new member, so you, this is, what happens here is that the board is required to have a hearing under the zoning act. The hearing's been had here.
I don't think we're required to give a recommendation.
Required to give a, that's correct, I'm just trying to make it, just trying to parse out the recommendation piece from the hearing. So you don't have to keep this open and not make a recommendation. You can make a recommendation at any time.
I, I, I'm not quite certain, uh, I don't know, I thought I heard somewhere that we can actually simply not make a recommendation.
You don't have to make a recommendation, that is true as well. But right now you have a motion to close the hearing itself.
Do we have a motion?
I believe so. It's in progress.
It's a, it didn't, it...
Yeah, I think I was...
I'll make a motion to close the hearing, public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What time is it?
Eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen.
Is there a motion to make a recommendation? If not, we will, I think we can just assume you're not gonna lead a debate.
We can always recommend next meeting, correct?
Or the town meeting floor.
Or at the town meeting floor, and we would have to discuss that beforehand. At a, at a future date.
Okay, we're done with that one.
Thank you, folks, thank you.
Do you have anything else, one second?
What, you've got three hours?
Hey, we started early, so...
No, 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 no. Jamaica's gotta get home.
Thanks, folks. Have a great night.
George, good to see you. Both Georges. Take care.
Okay, item eight. Thirty-five minutes later, this one. Uh, dwelling unit continues technical corrections to Article Three, Section eight, eight, nine, eight, two, Article Three, that's what I'm talking about, which I believe we have after all the look at.
Ah, yes, you have. Would you like I can make a brief disclaimer presentation for this?
Does anybody think this is a need for the presentation? Since we haven't looked at those.
We've already looked at them. In far as I'm concerned, I am satisfied with what's done.
I have a problem, you know, they're just the cleanup stuff.
Yeah.
Do you think for the benefit, Mr. Chair, maybe you can do it, if you feel comfortable for the benefit of the public, you can just briefly explain what the technical changes are, there's not gonna be any...
I will defer to you.
Let me just make a quick presentation, if I can figure out a, 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 for this.
I would likely at this point get an excuse.
I'd like, I'd like to know if, if your presentation is gonna have a blue line in all the pieces of paper. Was that intentional or non?
I think that means a copier needs cleaning.
Blue line?
That's a fine line, is it not?
Yes, it is.
It's a fine line.
It's a fine line.
There were days that I crossed it too.
Very fine line.
So, presentations for the board, I'll try to keep this brief to the point, realizing it's late, if the board's seen this.
Thank you.
So, the long and the short of this is that, so first off, this is a presentation for three technical corrections to the zoning by law. Having been here for a little while now, we look at the zoning by law, we see some things that are minor, these are kind of cleanup items, and, you know, there's a running list of the cleanup items. So every, every time we, we're trying to accomplish a few things at a time. This time it's not a major by law recommendation such as the accessory dwelling unit, which was last fall. So this is really cleanup, as you mentioned. Um, so there's three of them. The first one has to do with Article Three use regulations, especially the community and recreational facility section, as well as authorization of uses. The second one has to do with the land industrial office district, and the third one has to do with the role of the zoning board of appeals. So the first one has to do with revisions to subsection eight. For some reason, bridle paths are in there that they appear to be limited to daylight hours, but bridle path appears in the section that has recreation and community facilities in general, which don't seem to be limited in the same way. So working with the bylaw subcommittee, it would seem prudent to just strike the reference to daylight. So that's a small change. And the next, section nine, indicates that the zoning board is authorized to, to do something with respect to following uses, but it doesn't say what the board should do. So this adds clarification language that the board can grant site plan review for the uses listed in nine, as opposed to authorization, which is vague. It just provides a specific mechanism for the zoning board, which would be site plan review. The next set of changes are light industrial office. Um, the long and the short of it here is that there's a lot of information in the by law that's not necessary because it's site plan review requirements that appear elsewhere in the zoning by law. So what are the requirements for site plan review? What we've done here is made reference to the corresponding sections of the zoning by law. Instead of repeating it verbatim here, we take the reader into the relevant section where these procedures are already defined. In addition, some of these requirements are counterformed in the zoning act in terms of the advertising and posting requirements, so it is redundant. So this really strikes a couple of pages of unneeded and unnecessary language out of eleven A. Another third one is really minor. So currently, the zoning by law has four responsibilities, and they each begin to hear and decide. The first three of the four begin to hear and decide, to hear and decide, to hear and decide, except for the third one, for variances, it, it doesn't start with that language. So just to make the board's ability to grant variances consistent with the other format, we say to hear and decide applications for variances. That's pretty much it for that. Now, these are all minor changes, they're technical corrections, um, they have been worked through the process, worked with the bylaw subcommittee, right, in February, the bylaw subcommittee recommended favorable to this board. So here we are tonight for the hearing. Then after this will be the placement of recommendations by the select board in thin comment at town meeting. And just in summary, these are, these changes are part of a long-term fix to correct minor issues in the by law. Uh, the changes are technical corrections only that lead to consistency with the zoning act or remove unneeded language, and that the changes did not substantially alter the by law. For more information, folks can go to the website where this information is located or contact a planning office. Thank you. And I would say that the board should have in its packet the actual handout, which has the language that's new in underlying and with the new numbers to strike through.
Any questions or comments?
Nice work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Move to closing hearing?
Move to closing hearing?
Yeah.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
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 Do we wish to make a recommendation on this one?
I mean, make a motion, we recommend it favorably?
Well, second.
Is there any discussion on that? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done, I believe, with public hearings.
Hallelujah.
All right, I was second, then. Okay.
All right.
Let me see, we did ten low, right?
Mm-hmm.
We haven't missed anything on page one. Other than minutes.
I don't think so.
So I believe you're at item twelve, applying your report for the consulting engineer, which is in follow-up to some changes at the site, with the back and forth between hand again and clean.
Here's, it's still having some problems with the cover and the sewer and water that they haven't resolved yet.
Yeah, I couldn't believe that they haven't done that yet.
Yeah, it does.
Two feet? Two feet cover? Man.
Did they not put the pipe deep enough? Are you gonna be able to put two more feet on there?
Well, somehow or other, they've gotta correct it.
That's what I'm saying, drop the pipe down or they're gonna add more in.
Do they dig the pipe down deeper or put more on top?
That's what I was curious.
More on top, insulated, mound or something.
It, it, it appears, it's still some back and forth between D W and again.
Yes, as you can see, not all the items have been totally, um, worked out here. Unless you have anything for the board specifically to, which, uh, which they are deferred to the board on, which the board can deal with tonight or not, so...
As far as the trail thing, to me, uh, just been nice that there was a map in here showing what they were talking about.
Now, Cleed did agree to move it so it doesn't go over that spillway.
Oh, the spillway, yeah.
Okay. So, okay, any other comments on this? It's ongoing.
Right.
They are working on Britton Estates. And, uh, I would say there's still a fair distance away from Haven.
Yeah, uh, I took a drive in there, warm inside on Britton. And...
Sunk?
No, there, there was nothing there. I mean, it would still have been finished, I could not drive across it if I wanted to.
Oh, no, 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 no. It's not even close. So they're still pouring concrete.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, I don't know, I guess it's just, I, I guess, I'm just a little bit interested in how soon he's gonna get that access, because that's what frees up, frees up Bear Hill Two.
Mm-hmm.
And he's already said that he sold all the lots up Bear Hill Two.
Yeah. So I think it'd be pushing it by now.
But, la, last time I went and looked at Britton Estates, they were working, but I saw one guy, that's it.
Wow.
Yeah, it was kind of, it was just interesting because he was working on the wetland crossing, and he would do something on one side of part of the retaining wall, and then he'd walk all the way up and around, and then after do something on the other side, and then he'd walk all the way up and around and come back.
Wow.
Anyway, okay, anything more on Britton Estates?
Negative.
Bear Hill Two, I don't think we have anything new. I don't know, well, last I saw, they were installing utilities up there, but I haven't been up there recently. Anybody, anything on Bear Hill Two?
No.
Okay, Harbor Classic Homes, uh...
So it's a requirement of the HPDD by law that, and I'm back, take a step back here, so Harbor Classic Homes has applied for and filed a definitive site plan application with the HPDD Review Board. As part of the by law requires that it be distributed widely, in case any boards or commissions want an opportunity to comment, so it was been distributed to the planning board. We provided the link, instead of providing, you know, the pages for the document, we provided the link in the packet, so if the board wanted to offer any comments, we'd like to accept them on behalf of the HPDD board, if not, then it's just different for the board's information.
I have no comment.
I didn't take a look at it, so...
No.
I can make a comment here, but I also will at, at the other HPDD. I want a full water study, or have them put in a water tower. Fifty feet around the property for a second egress to landfill and dam. Also, walk and trail future tie-in to properties like new road to Kendall. And those are my things that I will be bringing up, but also, I feel that, um, at least, they do have a second egress on that thing, on, on, for getting in and out. If you have taken a look at it, originally they were only gonna have an emergency second egress, and no way in heck with that many...
With that many homes now.
Homes and everything else, it's best that they be tied to enter and exit all avenues.
But that's all RDIC.
That's all RDIC, but I'm just saying, I wanted you people to know about it.
Good, good, good. Anybody, anything else? No? On to the next. Zoning Board of Appeals, I'm in on submission, that's back to the Glenwood Road property, they are appealing... That's back to the Glenwood Road property, they are appealing the stop work order or cease and desist voted by the building inspector.
That's for the 94th.
And then I believe it's tomorrow night.
It is tomorrow night.
It is true.
Now, do we typically get... Do we typically give comments? I mean, we have a, I mean, again, we have opportunity to comment on submission, but I haven't seen this, you know what I mean? We haven't, I haven't seen this submit, was it, did I miss it?
Well, the supplemental, instead of providing the document, in this case, we just provided the link to it because it exists on the website elsewhere. So that's in the packet, the link and how to get to the information is there. Should the board would like to comment on it or not. Because it's a zoning board matter, under the zoning act, the planning board is made known of zoning board of appeals activities. Should the board want to comment, no comment is required, however.
You're required to ask, we're not required to respond.
And I feel that it's town's responsibility on this here, it's not so much as Mark's for allowing all different types of things to happen over the years. And I have to say, I also blame the planning board too for not enforcing home, major home occupation. Which, which shame on me, because I mean...
I'm not gonna say there's no blame on anyone. It's just, it is, unfortunately, it's small-town Massachusetts. It's not just Rutland. This kind of thing...
This is happening...
It's statewide.
Yeah.
That, a major part of zoning enforcement, it comes only by complaint.
And I would say that for me, this complaint, this particular complaint came long after this business has been existing and doing the same thing.
But it's, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, I did that, on this particular, again, they're all, like you say, all a little bit different. On this, on this instance, as I understand it, 10 years ago, there was no problem.
10 years ago, the business wasn't there.
No, the business has been there for 30-plus years.
No.
Oh, yeah. But it has grown, hasn't it?
It's grown.
The business...
Watch Use of Landscape and Excavation has been in existence since...
I know that it has.
Right. But it's been...
And the property was owned by the grandpa.
I know, I know that. I know, I know that. But the number of trucks that have gone by my house that have watch use at landscaping on them has gone from trucks that looked like they were gonna go out and work on somebody's lawn, right? Watch use at landscaping. Now, they're large dump trucks that are carrying gravel, rocks, lord knows what else, that travel at about 60 miles an hour. It's, the business is not the same as it was even five years ago.
I don't know.
That's what they, that's what they were talking about on the corner.
Yeah, exactly, you know, and you get, you know, it's, that's not as, that's, I mean, I've lived in this town my whole life too, and driven that road and...
On Glenwood Road?
T and T Oil. Is that any, I mean, this is the avenue you go down, just on that one business, on that one road. It's not just one individual with big trucks.
On Glenwood Road?
Yeah.
Okay, the thing is, we're not here to debate.
No, I don't, not here to debate, but as far as comments, that's, that's all I'm saying. That for me, knowing what I know about what has, you know, if you look at, they talk about tax bills, they talk about business zoning, they talk about all these different things, how it all, how it all came, and it came up from a complaint.
My point is that if you have a permit for one kind of a business, you, you need to stay with that business, or you need to get another permit, that's all.
And that's a good point, but...
Do we wish, do we wish to make a comment to the zoning board of appeals?
It seems we have different opinions.
That's the thing, it's as a unified board, I don't know, we can't, without hearing, again, it's tough, because you wanna make a comment before, you know, we've actually talked, I mean, everybody tomorrow night is gonna be able to openly speak about this, more so, and tonight was a little sneak peek, maybe, as to the issues or the concerns from people.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there tomorrow.
I'm gonna be there tomorrow, too.
The thing is, I do think any comment probably should not or could not be a recommendation for their action.
No, I'm going to...
It should be a statement of some fact.
And what would that fact be? I mean, I look at what you said, I think it's very noble for you to say that, that however many years ago, maybe the planning board, you know, there was mention of, you know, God bless him, Mr. Johnson, who approved, you know what I mean? There were things done 15 years ago, 20 years ago, 30 years ago, that gave the business the thumbs up. He was told he could do everything until somebody complained, and now it's different. So it's, that's kind of my comment or my take on it.
I look at it as history. It was his grandfather, Bob Love, that had the farm, the Christmas tree farm.
A Christmas tree farm.
Yeah.
And that's a lot different than what they're doing.
Then he went through that phase of it, and then he can, started on the...
The landscaping business.
Landscape, and he kept on working, he kept on growing.
And now it's turned into a major earth-moving business.
Right, and now I'm gonna ask the zoning board of appeals, does he have the right to go to the town and ask for a tax abatement for shutting them down?
I mean, there's a lot of...
Because, you know, to me, for kind of loud, the town was making a fair amount of money off of his operation there.
He was taxed as a business.
Yeah.
His tax bills stated that he was taxed as a business. You know, and again, a lot of this is gonna come out tomorrow night, so.
Oh, yeah.
And that's why I, and I'm not naive to the 60 mile an hour, the big rigs, all that type of stuff. I think those are where down the road, we would have the ability to make a comment and say, hey, we need to have the owner of what you said, and we've had some issues with your, with your vehicles, you know what I mean? That's maybe down the road where it goes, is that you can say there's no more 5:00 AM.
So you're saying that because he pays taxes, he has the right to do any kind of business he wants?
No, I've never said that.
Oh, it sounded like it, that's all.
Well, my opinion, because it's still in the family.
Putting words in my mouth, I love it, Maryland. So, can we rewind that? So I said because he pays taxes, he could have any business he wants? That's what you just heard me say?
You said, yeah, but you said because he pays a lot of money in taxes, correct?
No, that's not what I said.
We have one last thing to do.
I don't know what I said. Okay, item 16.
Actually, I'm not sure, I just want to clarify, so there's no comment for the planning board this matter?
I'm not seeing a consensus, so. Anybody individually wants to make a comment, they can go.
Just wanted to be sure, so I don't have to, so I don't know whether or not there's any correspondence.
Okay, zero main street, special permit, retail marijuana establishment.
Maybe I could just take all these together if you don't mind? 16, 17, 18, we don't have decisions yet. We will expect to have those for next meeting.
Hey, hey, hey.
Hey, hey, Hal.
No.
I may.
No?
I may.
She may.
The minutes.
Oh, the minutes!
The minutes. So I guess on these minutes, and I, this is just, this one is tough for me, I think everybody knows that, it was not easy for me to watch what happened, have happened after...
Should we make a motion and a second for discussion?
Yes, you have to.
Oh, sure, please, sorry.
A motion to what?
Motion to accept the minutes of March 22nd.
And then second for discussion.
Who said second? Well, I'd say second, please.
So we can say second, and then we'll discuss.
Yeah.
Now, we can have a discussion.
I do have some discussion.
Yeah.
One thing that I wanted to make sure of, and I don't know if it means we have to go back to the video or not, but when I asked Mr. Jordan at the beginning of the meeting, or as I understood at the beginning of the meeting, the wedding area on the north side of Mashka Park, if I'm saying it the right way, the, you know, on the other side of his farm property, he originally told me it was APR land, and that's what it states in here, but then during the meeting, I asked him very specifically, near the end, and he said it wasn't. So I just wanted to make sure.
I think it was, but where they held a wedding, it wasn't?
That's what I'm trying, because I believe that what he, so this is across the street, where the stone, was it a fireplace there?
No, it's the water, water tower.
It's an old one.
With the old, old window, stone thing right now.
Rail rail thing, yeah. But the weddings are across the street from that.
The weddings are across the street from his house.
Yeah.
Ceremonies.
I thought they were, where he had, I thought, I'm just going by what he had last year, the tent was, was on the same side of the road as his house.
The reception. The wedding ceremony.
Wedding ceremony, okay.
There's a ceremony and there's a reception at a wedding, typically, you get married and then you go party, right? So the ceremony is happening across the street, as I understand it.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember that, but that's fine. I'll go with you.
So, you know, and this all revolves around, for me, just making sure that we got the minutes correct on this. And I need to know, as it says here, it was different from what he said in the video.
Do you have lines, like, what you're looking at? Like, are there lines down? Is that...
I can count them down.
If you, Kevin asks for specifics on shelters.
Just give me a page, or one page, one page, two.
Yeah, hang on, I just gotta, I was going through my mind, I had three or four things, but I'm just finalizing.
All right, never mind, I'm happy if you don't have it.
I think, Kevin, are you referring to the sentence where it says, Kevin asks if these activities are taking place on APR land, and Randy believes that it is, but he had no comment as to whether or not the state had approved the use?
Right, and then there was another one, other, uh...
It's about halfway down that paragraph.
Okay. To be placed, Randy just believed that it is, as to whether or not the state approved the use.
Oh, it was also noted that the area across the street for hosting weddings is also APR land. So, yeah, right halfway down, it was also noted. So I'm just saying, that's, that's fine, it's noted that it is APR land, but he had said that it wasn't in the video.
Well, he said he believed it was, but he didn't know if the uses were approved by the state.
The first go around, and then it was later on. And again, maybe it's irrelevant, I'm just bringing it up because it was two things by the applicant, he said two different things in the meeting. And I'm trying to find, you know, figure out which one is actually true.
The minutes seem to be reinforcing that it is APR land.
Correct.
Which is correct.
Correct. And may, again, maybe it's irrelevant, but I just, you know, it was just something that, that came up. Another thing that I had in here was that Tim had mentioned about the Boy Scouts of America approving it, and he had mentioned that he was sure that the Boy Scouts of America as the organization would approve the camping aspect of it, so...
Oh, I don't remember him saying that.
Yeah, he said, I'm sure that, you know, the Boy Scouts, he said very, the Boy Scouts are very specific about things, I'm sure that they wouldn't...
I think the one said that, that's all right.
I thought it was two.
No, I, I didn't say anything about them approving it, I know that. But I, I know I did say something that, you know, they are very, very particular about the conduct of camping, from the leaders to the facilities, to, to, you know, all of that sort of thing.
Right, that's what I remembered.
Now, you know, you would hope that the, I don't know if you wanna call it enforcement or whatever, of that, it is, is started right at the scoutmaster position. Whoever happens to be the scoutman, the troop is going to be looking at.
That's what I had hoped too, and I've found out that it hasn't.
But we can't control that.
I know we can't, I fully understand that, but my, you know, my, my point is, and again, I'm not trying to change what everybody's done for the last, you know, I, I get that, but as I, as I look through and realize that people are supposed to seek proper approval, we talk about all these procedures that really should be done, we talk about these businesses that are supposed to do these certain things, and I don't think it should be any different for these people that should, gotten approval from Boy Scouts, should have gotten approval from APR, I understand it hasn't happened, and there's nothing we can do to make that happen at this point, but...
But is that our responsibility?
That's what I'm still trying to figure out. Whose responsibility is it?
I don't think it's the planning board.
It's not ours.
It's not, I mean, you're right, I'm not disagreeing with...
It's nobody's responsibility, because nobody's gonna follow up on it, but...
Well, that's just like the past hundred years of zoning enforcement.
Right. Um... The only thing I'd say, the consensus of, and then as we go down, the consensus of the other members was that a site walk was not necessary, and it was noted that it was not within the board's purview to get involved in the status of the APR land, which I understand. I had a problem, and I, you know, I, it was very specific that I was the only person that wanted to go on a site walk. The other three members didn't believe it was necessary, but you also said you physically couldn't, and Tim very specifically said that he just didn't have the time. And I don't know if that could be put in there or not, but I think it's important because I was the only board member that wanted to go on a walk, and you said you physically couldn't do it, and Tim said he didn't have the time to do it, not that it wasn't necessary.
I think, just to clarify my position on this particular one, because this is the farm, the road, the here, you know, the tent is here, I've never seen him do anything over here with, on the other side of the road, but it's just the configuration of it is very familiar to me because I live in that area.
But you have a vote to the, this campsite.
Pardon? But I don't think the campsite was part of what we were...
The campsite was very much part of what we approved, Maryland, you approved camping on APR land, without, and this is what I'm trying to say.
Because APR land is not our responsibility.
I know it's not, but my point about the site walk is that nobody, nobody, including our board of health, our fire chief, the building inspector, has been to this campground. The Boy Scouts of America have not been to this campground. And all I'm saying, again, it's a mute, it's done, but I was just...
But is it, are, is it the, if you took, if you told me that this is, the campsite is the planning department's responsibility, then I'm on your side.
Well, we approved camping on a site plan. All I, all I wanted to do was go the next morning, a walk this property. You drew a map, oh, this is, this is, this, I have not been there.
I'm just saying, that's why...
I wasn't given the opportunity.
This is why I, I agreed, I didn't really have anything to do with...
Well, you said you physically couldn't.
Because, I, not on this one.
Yeah, you did.
Well, maybe I did, I remember that.
I'm quite sure you did. And Tim said he didn't have the time, so my point is...
I don't think that...
I mentioned to him in the next sentence that he stated that the map provided was detailed, and he felt comfortable making a decision without a site walk.
I understand, but he also said that he didn't have the time to do it. Didn't have the time. And that bothers me, just personally, between everybody else, that if you're on the planning board, you can't find the time, that's understandable, but to deny another member the right to go for a walk, it bothers me. It bothers me quite a bit. You weren't physically able to do it, he didn't wanna do it, didn't have the time to do it, I did, and you denied me that opportunity.
The question is, are you happy with the minutes? I mean, you want them rewritten?
I have a whole bunch of, that's what I'm saying, there's a whole bunch of things in here that, and everybody feel free to re-watch the video again before our next meeting, I don't know if this can get brought onto the next meeting, but I would encourage people to watch it and really listen to what was said there, because there were things said between everybody in this meeting that were not depicted, in my opinion, properly in the minutes.
Okay, good question. Do you want the minutes to state that Marilyn stated she was not physically able to do the site walk?
I just wanna make sure that, my point...
No, you said you want, you wanna make changes to the minutes, is that a change you wanna make, yes or no?
I would say yes, as well as, as well as Tim not having time for it.
Okay. I don't know, I don't.
If I may, Norm?
Yes.
I think that, so I always try to write, do my best to write comprehensive minutes, but it's also not a transcript of every single thing that was said. So I think if we're going to make those changes, I would feel more comfortable watching it again to make sure that we all heard the same thing, um, because I, you know, I wouldn't write it down if it wasn't said. But it's also not a transcript either.
Well, yeah, and, and I, that, that's kind of where I'm coming from, because it, it isn't. It is not a word for word transcript of the meetings.
And I, and I fully understand, and I know that there's, like a lot of other meetings, it's ten people talking at the same time. There's multiple people, you know what I mean? So to miss stuff, I understand it, but...
Is, is there, is there harm in including those bits and pieces? What does it contribute? What does it contribute?
To the minutes?
Yeah.
Um, I'm hoping that next time somebody wants to go on a site walk, that they're given the opportunity to do so and not...
And you think including those things will do that?
I, I don't know. You, you, you gotta, you know, again, you're, you're thirty years in. I'm, I'm eleven months. I, I don't know, but I do know that I didn't like, I didn't like, I'll say, right, if Tim was sitting here, I'd say, you know, he, he said he did not have time to do it. And that truly bothered me as a resident of the town of Rowland, and it bothered me as a member of the planning board, that another member said that they just didn't have the time. And if he doesn't have the time, then why wouldn't he at least allow me when I offer to do it six hours later? And if you're not physically capable, I get it.
Yeah, I'm...
But, but, but you held me from being physically capable and finding the time to do it. I wasn't, I wasn't allowed to. So I'm not even sure that this means anything, where I can, you talk about precedent, you can't do that, but... You know, my point in all of this, and to have him in the minutes, be it that it matters or not, is that next time around, you guys said, oh, but we didn't go on yours. I wanted you guys to come on a site walk. I wanted it, because then everybody can say, we all went there. That's why I didn't sign this, because I haven't been there. And as a member of the planning board, if somebody else in town comes back to me and says, why, have, did you go there? I said, no, I didn't. And I'm not saying you can't every single time. But my point is that when it comes to these types of things, because they're still very new, we're still working through the specifics of them, um, there's still a case-by-case basis. I was surprised that we didn't do a site walk on mine, and I really wanted them, because I haven't been to either one of these properties. And that was the only reason that I didn't sign it, is because I wasn't allowed to go on a walk. And that's why I was hoping to have it in the minutes. Next time, if you're not physically able, or you don't have the time, at least allow the other people to do it.
So by allowing the other people to do, we would have moved that mi- the minute of the, uh, meeting up two mo- two months, two weeks?
It's still, it's still in delay for another two weeks?
It's still what?
The decision still hasn't even been written.
Oh.
It's my whole point. It would have held nothing back. It wouldn't have hold up, it wouldn't have held up anything.
I mean, it, it, it would have given him longer to write for, I don't, I, I don't agree with that argument, but...
That it would. Well, it's already been moved out.
So, so if you want to say in here, I would rather have you say that Marilyn stated she was very familiar with the property and did not feel the need of a, of a site walk, because I don't think that camping was something that we should have really gotten into.
I don't understand it, but you approved the use. I just don't understand it.
Because I could have gone to that one. I just am surprised that I said that. I mean, I, I was physically able to walk that farm, just that I've been on it so many times. I didn't feel the need to, and I didn't feel it, that we had to really examine the campground.
I, I don't particularly recall you saying that. I'm not saying you did or didn't, but I don't...
Maybe I hear things. Hey, that's why I watch the video and go through it again. That's what I did. I watched it again, and I read through the minutes and...
Okay, what are some of the places?
Um... I mean, as far as the Jordan one, that was, you know, mostly it. You know, again, we can go round and round on down the road, how to, you know, who's, who's overseeing these things. Um, but the, I guess the other thing that was said was that, and I believe it was Tim, was that, you know, all of this has to be approved through all the other governing bodies. Um, and I just didn't see that anywhere in there, if it needs to be in there. That these site plan approvals for fifty-one Mashka Park and two-sixteen Washington Street, our decision...
Our decision opens up the opportunity for those other bodies to, to come in and look at the science.
Really, should, the other, it should have been the other way. That's my whole point, is the APR should have been approved first, and then it comes to us, but my point...
But that's not...
Now, out of respect for the state, yes. If you, you know, just out of respect for the state of Massachusetts. Uh, but my point is that...
But our, our decision makes, depends really on the APR, the DAPR. I mean, the A, the APR does not depend on our decision, is what I'm trying to say. The other ones that make the final approval is to the...
Not if you don't go for it.
As to the use of the land.
No, that's the problem. They're not gonna, they're not putting in for approval from APR.
But that, they're a different agency. Is that, am I correct?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's a different agency.
It's, yeah, but they have their own, I mean, they can over...
They have their own site plan approvals and their own process.
They can override us, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, yeah, they're not getting...
Yes, they can.
But they're not getting, they're not submitting. Neither Lilac Hedge or Jordan's Dairy Farm are submitting site plans to APR.
And you can't do a thing about that.
I understand that, but it was said in the meeting that our approval is based on all the other governing bodies' approvals.
No, it's not. I don't...
You're twisting that.
I, I think you might have misheard that.
Again, we can watch it, we can watch it all together if we want to.
Our approval is also subject to all of those other approvals.
The Board of Health?
Just because we say yes, doesn't mean they can do it.
Right.
This plan meets the requirements that the planning board looks at, which are quite specific. I'm not going to go into them at the moment, but there's specific requirements that we look into it. The Board of Health can come in and say, you can't do that.
Well, now, I had thought...
And that overriding our, our decision.
The way it all goes, I thought the Board of Health, the ZBA, the Building Inspector, Concom, didn't they get this all before our last hearing? Fire Chief, Police Chief, they supposed to all...
They, they get it.
Maybe not Concom, but the Building Inspector, correct? Had to approve this prior to us?
Because it wasn't proposing a building.
Yeah.
That's, you know, but that's because we asked them for it.
That's what I'm, that's exactly what, so am I wrong in this statement?
But they can still, they can still override us when they get the plans of the building.
The application before it came to us two weeks ago went through the other boards.
It didn't go through the boards.
Is there something in the meeting minutes that you'd like for me to clarify that I said about this item? And with respect to what boards and commissions didn't review it?
Yes, exactly.
Is there something in here, what?
Well, there is, exactly. There's nothing in here that says that.
That says what?
That says that, my point, so another, so the application, I don't know, actually I do have it. The applications that came through, right?
Mm-hmm.
From Lilac Hedge, from, right. So this packet is, in, in its entirety, did this go to, um, David McCray? Fire Chief, Police Chief?
No.
Before it came to us?
It definitely would not have gone to Building Inspector. No building was proposed.
I was under the impression that you...
Once again, I'm, I'm gonna, so you're a new member on the board, so when it comes to meeting minutes, and generally how meeting minutes work, is meeting minutes are not a transcript. There's no requirement that meeting minutes be a transcript. I would say that the meeting minutes that you have here probably go above and beyond the actual information that's required for meeting minutes. Because in a strict sense, if you were to do meeting minutes in a very narrow sense, in a very narrow technical sense, at least as the, um, the AG has outlined it, or I believe it's the AG, you need to have the topic discussed, revoked, and very basic information as to what the matter was. So these are, this is not a transcript. Having said it's not a transcript, I'll reiterate what I said at the meeting. That is, prior to this board getting this information, it was distributed through the interdepartmental review team, and each of the members, as I so listed at that time, reviewed this matter, and they had no comments. That's what I said at the last meeting on this. And that's what I'm saying now. Whether that gets into the meeting minutes or not, I don't know. It did not a transcript, but that's what I said at that time.
Okay, and the interdepartmental, um, review consists of whom?
I'm sorry, did I just not mention what that was?
The interdepartmental review team. I don't know who that is. So no, you did not.
At the prior meeting, I indicated this to Chief of Police, the Fire Department, Fire Chief, the Building Commissioner, the Conservation Agent, in this case being the Conservation Agent Chair, adding his staff, the Planning, the Town Planner, the Board of Health Agent. Those are the entities that make up the IRT.
Okay.
They had your opportunity to review it. These two, based upon an issue with the prior one, the first one that was done, we lose an issue. Well, where's the IRT review on that one? Well, it didn't happen for that one. So that was an adjustment made for all subsequent agricultural accessory use site plans. So that was a correction made based upon the first go around. So that was an improvement to the process, so they reviewed it.
But that's not necessarily their final approval, because they don't give us any comments.
It's not a final approval. It's circulating the application to these groups, just like we did for the cow wash, like for the marijuana store, large development projects, go to the IRT early in the process, before it gets to the Land Use Board, to see if these entities have any questions or comments, to help the applicant refine their application, to make it the best application it can be, or to identify issues early on. That's the purpose of that review. It's not a final review. It is not a substitution for Board of Health Agents. Final review for anybody else's for that matter. But that's kind of going, in my opinion, going far afield of what I believe you folks are trying to do here, which is to wrap up the meeting mess, uh, but I'll leave that to the board. That's, that's your part.
I, I have a fix on, uh, page five, forest cutting plan, McAllister Estate. I would change estate, uh, remove it and replace it with, uh, CB Blair Development, because the estate is not...
It makes player, didn't it?
Because he's not doing, you know, the estate. He's just doing a couple of lots up there for, for cutting the brush, or cutting the trees. It was the forest cutting plan, McAllister Estate. I'm saying, should probably just say McAllister Plan for CB Blair or something like that, you know.
Yeah, whatever you need to do on that one.
Yeah, because that's...
I mean, ultimately Blair is all of the property.
Yes.
Is that making any sense?
And, uh, general sign, and by law...
The IRT didn't say it. I talked to them.
The first sentence there...
But they can still complain about it.
Next to the last word, you forgot the H.
I'm sorry, Dick. I didn't hear what you said and what section that was. Is that under the same thing?
Page five.
Okay.
General sign by law review. You have the end of the last sentence. You got wit. You should, I think you forgot the H.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
That's all, just a scum. And that's all I have.
Well, I guess it's a mute, it's a, it doesn't matter at this point, but where I was going with that last one on this IRT is that I spoke with several members of the IRT about this, and they weren't aware of the specifics or of anything. So I'm just curious, and this isn't a knock it.
That's categorically not true.
It's not a knock it, anybody.
It's categorically not true. It's not true. It was distributed through an email to that group.
I'm just trying to get...
It was distributed as an email to that group.
Can I finish, or no?
No, I need to respond to this.
I haven't even finished one of, I haven't even finished my question.
It was distributed to the group by email. If not all members had a chance to respond, that, I don't, I'd have to check to see if that was the case. It was distributed to the IRT group by email.
Can I ask my question now? So as a process, you send this to the IRT team as an email, and that's, I'm not knocking it, but that's it, correct?
No, that's not it. Then there's a, a meeting with the applicant in the IRT. In this case, it's a remote meeting.
And that happened?
Yeah, that happened, yes.
And were there members of the IRT on this meeting?
Yes, there were.
Was it a full, because the people that I talked to didn't, you know what I get, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out. So why wasn't that IRT meeting ever discussed? And I didn't even know, why was that never brought up in the site plan to say that everybody, hey, this happened? That would have changed my mind that night. This is the first I've heard that there was a pre-conference IRT meeting about these other...
Because it's just, it's procedure.
I get it, it's great. It's fantastic. I'm not trying to change anything. I'm trying to understand it.
That's why I say it's a procedure.
So why do you, why do you keep putting words in my mouth, saying I'm trying to change things?
I'm not changing, I'm just...
You just said I'm trying to change things.
No, 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 no. I said that it's procedure. That's why it's not mentioned in every meeting who's reviewed it. We've never done that.
Aye. I voted aye.
You voted aye. Uh, I, I guess the, the only thing that I, I am going to say is I do have to confirm both what Tamika and Dave had said about the quality of minutes. These minutes are miles above any requirements that are set by the state for meeting minutes, miles above.
Mm-hmm. I'm not saying they're not.
And, you know, to, to start picking out on, probably are not really of any consequence.
Depends on who you talk to.
Certainly in, 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 in my opinion.
It was just for me, because I spent, and I'll end it with this. I spent more time on the agricultural accessory bylaw before I was a member of this planning board. Three years now I've been putting into this. And what I was told in the beginning and what I moved forward on has now changed. Things are different, and I don't understand why. And I can't, as a member, ask questions. I'm not allowed to. It's just, it's mind-blowing to me that...
I believe I turned my...
It doesn't matter. It's irrelevant. I don't even know why.
But I already have that.
Okay.
If it is the product of more than one person, things don't always end up as...
We're hurting ourselves.
Well, I can say one thing. I mean, when, when I started on this board, there was never any communication to other boards.
I will entertain the motion to accept the minutes of whatever it was.
We already made the motion, and it was already seconded for discussion, and all that was left is voting, and I said aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Negative.
I'll accept the motion to...
Second.
Any discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye.